Thank you, everybody. Welcome to today's city council meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I think it was Councilmember Harrison. Join up. Lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Councilmember Harrison has pulled D2. Do we have a motion to approve the remainder?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That was unanimous, clerk. So, D2, if we could have, Councilmember Harrison, if you would like to address that, we'll see if someone from staff could answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thanks. This is for the surplus property sale for $450,000, and I wanted to learn more where those funds are earmarked. I'm curious if affordable housing is part of that mix, or perhaps streetscapes in those areas, but I'm curious if staff could let me know, is there a plan for that, or will there be discussion upcoming on how those monies are spent?
Ken Bowers of Planning and Development, joined by Allison Pamp from our real estate division. I'll give the short answer. Allison, chime in if I get anything wrong, and if you have any further questions. So, the action in front of you is to authorize the accepting the bid and beginning the sale process. It would take at least four weeks before we could potentially be back with you, maybe longer, depending on if there's any competing bids, to accept the highest bid, and then at that point, you would have the decision as to where to allocate the money. Staff could provide a report with some options as to where it goes, but you do not have to make that decision today.
So, just to clarify, by agreeing to accepting the bid, we will still have the opportunity to discuss how the monies are spent?
That's correct.
Okay. Then I don't have any concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? That was unanimous, clerk. Thank you. Next, we have public comment. We set the timer for three minutes. We'll start with Ms. Rainey.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. My first question is that I met with the Raleigh Housing Authority, and they told me that it was two mayors who told them to move in a different direction. I don't know what that direction means, but I have asked before, when will there be a joint meeting between the city council and the Raleigh Housing Authority, so we all can hear what directions are they moving in? And I was told that last month, that it was two mayors who told them to move in a different direction. I found that cruel, because it has never been discussed. The second thing I want to talk about is 30% of the AMI. I find it outrageous, deplorable, that you will allow 40 stories to come in, and they don't build affordable housing. They are going to give you money for your affordable housing projects, but they exclude it from their own project? That is discrimination. That's why I keep saying, I don't understand where the city's going anymore. The poor can't live downtown. And don't give me about that radius of poor people. You use that the way you want to use it, but the bottom line is everybody have a right to live in this city. And when you discriminate against the poor, and I'm gonna use the word discriminate, because that's all it is, poor people can't live downtown, and that's an outright disgrace. Stormy, Cory, and Mary, you need to be standing up for affordable housing. You need to be standing up. Something is wrong with this picture now. Something is wrong, and it's gone too far. You know, I want to talk about restrictive covenants. See, they had restrictive covenants against some poor white people. They couldn't live in the upscale areas, just like the blacks. So, there's something wrong. There's something seriously wrong, and it's your policies. It's your downright, dirty, filthy policies. And that is a shame. We should all be able to live where we work or play. And the Restaurant Association and the Hotel Association, shame on them. They don't even come down here to advocate for their own clients. They don't come down here. Why? I want to know why they do not advocate for their clients. Everybody else do. So, why? How come they don't come down here and say they have a right to live downtown where they work? So, there's something really wrong with this picture, and it's just outright discrimination.
Thank you. Next, we have Lawrence Yaley.
Good afternoon.
What was the correct pronunciation of your last name?
Great, Yaley.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Good job. Good afternoon. I sent you all an email in March expressing various concerns about the 2024 budget and process. To briefly repeat, please note the projected chart's stated budget. If you turn around, I'll try to highlight it with my laser. I guess it's not carrying that far. But anyway, the last sentence talks about ensuring equitable outcomes for all. Also, the budget chart included the city's equity statement, talks about race being the primary indicator of people's outcome. I see that as reading like it was written three generations ago during the era of Rosa Parks and Bloody Sunday, when race was, emphasis was, a predictor of individual outcomes. Today's city council and city management team is just one example. This proves this gross exaggeration and falsehood. It's absurd and irresponsible to currently attribute equity differences solely to race, while ignoring the real root causes and predictors, including education, marketable skills, family structure, and personal responsibility. Similarly, the city's stated budget goal should simply be to provide high-quality municipal services, water, sewer, police, fire, zoning protections, et cetera, at the most fiscally responsible cost. Nowhere in over 400 pages of the 2023 budget overview and complete text is fiscal responsibility to the taxpayer mentioned. The city has completed some benchmarking, but it appears to be largely incomplete across all departments. Go Raleigh bus transit needs to reinstate nominal fares to provide revenue incentive user responsibility and address driver safety concerns. Zoning and building permit fees should fully fund those city costs. The RPD has also recently been demonized by a small number of vocal citizens calling for defunding, elimination of proactive policing, termination without due process, describing police as murderers, et cetera. These individuals and their organizations do not represent the vast majority of nearly a half million Raleigh citizens who respect the police and rely on their prompt professional service for public safety. Raleigh does not need a repeat of the failed experiments in Seattle, Portland, San Francisco, Chicago, the list goes on. The RPD is currently 20% understaffed, therefore well under budget this year, with funds available for retention bonuses. Officers are underpaid compared to surrounding cities and need to be fully supported as a priority in the 2024 budget. Taxpayers face a 10% increase in property taxes based on approved bonds alone. Benchmark your overhead departments. For example, 25 people in communications, and assess consolidation in the court competencies with other cities, including 100 people in ICA.
Thank you, Mr. Yaley. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Keisha Monk.
Good afternoon, everyone. City Council, you have been charged with the responsibility of making, in my opinion, one of the most important rezoning decisions in this city's history. And while most people probably think that your decision will only impact southeast Raleigh, its taxpaying residents, property owners, and the surrounding areas, I want to assure you that if the city council makes an ill-informed decision based on one-sided misinformation, it will tragically affect this entire nation. And I know it sounds a bit far-fetched, but it really isn't, because we're living in a country currently where legislators just a few miles south of here are attempting to legally erase Black history. Two weeks ago, Councilwoman Harrison asked for clarity about the Prince Hall Overlay District. Senior Planner Bynum Walter passed the mic to someone else who blanked out, those are her words, not mine, and added that the Prince Hall District was established before her time. And again, this is not a personal dig, but she neglected to say the obvious, which is the Prince Hall District is Raleigh's first African-American and mixed-use district. The Prince Hall District, simply put, is Black history. This property is within the Prince Hall District, and I have literally felt sick to my stomach about the narrative that has been regurgitated over and over again.
Cephas Daniels lived there for 29 years during the time he fomented the uprising in Wilmington, leading to the death of scores of Black leaders in Wilmington. So, there is a conflicted history there.
I'm trying to understand why we place so much emphasis on RHDC when they don't place emphasis on the community and the feelings of the past that may come up today that could be hurtful. So, I am for the conditions as you have it regarding these historic buildings. Wouldn't care if this building was to go, being demolished. That's just me.
The original builders and owners of the particular property were Confederate military officers.
This is a full-out attempt to race shame, and quite frankly, I think it's disgusting. A half-truth is a whole lie. Every time this property has come up in hearings, there are individuals who are only acknowledging the racist background in an attempt to divide and conquer for financial gain. For 80 years, Dr. Piggy's, a former slave, and his family lived in this home. He obtained his PhD, served as Chair of Philosophy and Languages, and then later served as Dean at Shaw University's Divinity School. And that is the true legacy of this home. Just because a piece of property hasn't been designated or protected by a piece of paper with some sort of declaration, it's, you know, by an institution or commission, doesn't mean that it's not historic. To erase that history would be tragic. As stewards of our beloved city, please don't turn a blind eye to history.
Thank you. Next is Eugene Myrick.
Eugene Myrick, Southeast Raleigh. My concern is conflict of interest. And again, the conflict of interest, an appointed board member, again, referring to Planning Commission, an appointed board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property, subject to a rezoning petition, or the applicant for a text amendment, is a person with whom the member has a close familial business or other association. So, this slide, you have Mac Paul and CJ Mann, both work with Downtown South. CJ Mann is on the Planning Commission. Mac Paul is presenting other cases in front of CJ Mann. And here you have these two people having a conversation.
With the BRT corridor, Shaw University happens to be at the epicenter of one of the station areas, which call for a quarter-mile, you know, greater height and intensity in those areas.
I am for the conditions as you have it regarding these historic buildings. To me, I wouldn't care if this building was to go, being demolished.
Once again, these two people are having a conversation. One is on the Planning Commission, one, hold on, wait, let me go. This is on CJ Mann's website. He is a construction manager. It says estimated project cost 2.2 billion. That's Downtown South. Mac Paul is the attorney for that project. That should be a conflict of interest. He should not have sat in on that hearing. Next slide, you have CJ Mann's website on Raleigh Raised. You have Ike Wheeler on Raleigh Raised. CJ Mann, again, with a conflict of interest with Ike Wheeler. Why? Here we have on the next slide, Ike Wheeler is one of the trustees at Shaw University. So, again, if I go back, you have Ike Wheeler and CJ Mann working together. They are familiar with each other. He should not have sat in on that hearing. So, to say just that it's one vote is not acceptable. What should have happened is, he should have recused himself. Other than Commissioner Bennett, he had the most vocal voice, as you all heard. So, to say it's just one vote is not acceptable. That whole, whatever they approved of, should be omitted, and it should go back to the Planning Commission. My next slide is, this was a letter that we sent to Attorney York, asking for clarification in regards to this conflict of interest. We never got a response in regards to that. And then another gentleman spoke of CJ Mann contributing to city councilors. And again, if you go to his website, he has endorsed Branch, Fort, and Melton. And this gentleman here, I don't remember his name, but this was his comment.
CJ Mann gave money to Jonathan Corry and Stormy, and he had continuous absences from the board, but he made sure he was present for this case. And worse of all, he had an employee on the trustee board of Shaw University. He should have recused himself from voting on this case.
Okay. Your time is up. Thank you. Helen Tartt is not here. Chris Crew would be next. Is Chris here? I don't see him. Okay. Erica Moss.
Greetings. My name is Erica Moss. I live downtown on South Wilmington Street, just a few blocks away from my beloved Shaw University. I attended and graduated from the esteemed HBCU in 1996. I am proud, humbled, and grateful to have earned a degree from a university that holds a steep and rich legacy within the civil rights movement and the fight for social justice. The university has not only been in service to its students, but it has also extended its service to the Black community that surrounds it. When I learned about the rezoning of my cherished alma mater, my feelings were of dismay, dread, and anger. I am a community organizer with Power the Vote NC, and there are many streets within southeast Raleigh I have personally canvassed. I have engaged with Black family members whom I have had not only the pleasure of, and also the honor of, building meaningful relationships with. I know with this rezoning comes more gentrification and the pushing out of more Black families who live in southeast Raleigh for decades due to the rise of housing taxes. The impact of this rezoning also brings the threat of erasure of the Black campus culture as we have known it to be. Growth should never be at the expense of the families and students who live within the community. Sometimes, Black folk who hold the desire for white adjacency have a tendency to become jaded, thinking that using the master's tools will help to fortify their foundation, when in essence, those tools are used for one purpose only, and that is to secure the foundation and the house of the master. With the removal of the historic buildings in favor of a 30- to 40-story building across from campus is just another form of gentrification that the students will never benefit from. The rezoning will be a benefit to the developers and those individuals who are shaking hands and rubbing shoulders with them. The average student from Shaw comes from humble beginnings. How do you think a 30- to 40-story apartment building will be affordable for a Shaw student? I am not in favor of this rezoning, because I know what is coming down the road for Shaw University and the rest of southeast Raleigh. The historic properties that exist in the Prince Hall District and the rest of southeast Raleigh will be ripe for the picking of developers in this area, and it will no longer be reflective of the existing culture, Black culture. It will further the attempts to become as white as the driven snow.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Next, we have Jean Alston.
Good afternoon. This is Jean Alston, Social Justice Ministries. I think all, you know, probably know me. Okay. I want to say something about beautification of the other neighborhoods that we are not looking at. We're looking at North Raleigh, cutting grass and everything like that. We have forgot about southeast Raleigh. We have forgotten all about that, and I think it should be some funds for it. Now, another thing I want to bring up is the senseless killing of people that is going into stores, getting stabbed to death. If this is going to happen, then maybe we should just fire all the police officers, and let's take this in our own hands, because that is what we're doing. And we are sending out a message to the other counties and everything if we let this go on. Beautification is something that should happen every neighborhood, and we should not ride down one neighborhood and see all the grass cut and everything is beautiful, and then ride down another street where no one is taking care of it. You got older people that cannot cut their grass. We need to have a fund set aside for beautification, and then as far as loitering, we need to have that, because it was a man that got killed at a car wash that don't have a car. So, that means that it's loitering, and it needs to be enforced. This is getting way out of hand, and believe me, if I was sitting on the city council and I was the mayor, I would love to leave that office and say, I made a difference, and I've done something to help. I know it's going to be hard, and I know there's no easy fix, but the only thing is, we can try to do this thing. We got to stop this, essentially murdering people, and because somebody wanted to steal a candy bar, you the judge and the jury, they say that this is a death penalty? You can't do this, and we need to make a stand. I got 10 more seconds, but anyway, I want everybody here to understand that this cannot go.
Thank you. Next, we have Shandolin Wilson.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Shandolin Wilson. I'm originally from Boston, Massachusetts. My husband and I, we came here 10 years ago, seeking a new place to live and also to open up ministry. But in the midst of that, we had an opportunity to meet with law enforcement. And in the midst of us meeting law enforcement, the first thing we learned is that they're out there to protect and serve us. But not only that, we also learned that they are losing out as well, the funding, their benefits, everything that is beneficial to help them mentally, physically, emotionally. And I'm standing here before you right now to ask and to plead, fund our police officers. They need the help, because we need them to help us. We need them to police and to do the proper law enforcement. Did you know that officers cannot afford to live in Raleigh? And that is a shame. Did you know there's approximately 112 officers short? We need law enforcement. Without law enforcement, we have no order. Without order, we have no structure. So, I just want to leave this with you, and I want you to take this at hand and heed, that without the law enforcement that we need, we will have more destruction. But we have to honor and respect those who are working on our behalf. I remember growing up, there was a slogan saying, "We have Mr. Officer Friendly." And they would come in, and they would smile and actually introduce themselves, so we would not be afraid of who they are. But now, we're living in a day and age that we don't know who we're dealing with. But again, we need the funding to help our officers, so they can be beneficial to us. So, I want to leave before my time expires, that to help us to help them. I want to also acknowledge that without them, that we will have nothing. We need them to help us. So, again, please fund our officers. We know that it's a work at hand. We know it's challenging, it's difficult, but we need them. They are beneficial, they are helpful. Yes, you will have the vigilante's, yes, you will have the good and the bad. It's evident, it's part of nature, it's part of life. But the bottom line is, without our law enforcement, we will have chaos, and we should be about order, and we should be about positivity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shelton Wilson. Okay. Not here. Matthew Cooper.
Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Cooper. I'm the president of the Raleigh Police Protective Association. We are an advocacy group that represents over 400 Raleigh police officers. We are here again to make an appeal, not a demand, to the Raleigh City Council, to take action to ensure her police department can attract and retain her officers. Our message may be redundant, but it does not make it less true. Since September 2020, nearly 100 officers have voluntarily separated from the Raleigh Police Department. These numbers do not include retirements. Approximately one-third of these officers are currently employed by agencies in Wake County. Dozens of officers are now slated for retirement over the next few years, which will negate recent gains we have made in recruitment. We are thankful for the members of the community who have offered words of encouragement during these times, but words are not enough, and decisive action needs to happen. Our department is not the only department that is facing staffing shortages and recruitment challenges. Other cities in North Carolina Legislature have taken action. There is currently a bipartisan bill in the North Carolina Senate, SB 415, called the NC State Highway Patrol Retention Act. This bill, when it becomes law, will give the Highway Patrol the resources and the commitment it needs to attract and retain officers. The city of Rocky Mount has announced that it will give a 36% pay rate adjustment to newly hired officers. Excuse me, to newly hired officers. If Rocky Mount, a city with a modest tax base, can prioritize employee compensation, Raleigh can do as well. We would also like to thank our chief, Estella Patterson. Chief Patterson has shown what the difference is between someone who is a leader and someone who is an administrator. She continues to tackle the many challenges she has inherited and has become our strongest advocate. We would like to thank, we would like for her to have a long tenure as our chief, but that is contingent upon the support she receives from city government. Please give her the tools and resources to ensure her continued success. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we have Matthew Brown.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your service, and thank you for letting me speak, and I mean that sincerely, as I know you were here until close to midnight two weeks ago. I've been showing photos of the historic treasures and affordable housing that will likely be lost if they are included in the TOD, Transit Overlay District rezoning, and I'll be showing more. But you are probably wondering why these are included in the rezoning, since they are so valuable to our city. We asked the planner in charge of the proposal, and he told us quite honestly, he drew the district lines on a map to include parcels close to the proposed bus rapid transit. He doesn't know the people who live on these parcels. In most cases, he doesn't know what is on the parcels, and that is not his fault. He just moved to Raleigh a few years ago. His job title is technology analyst. This sort of rezoning is the current fashion for city planners. Back in the 1960s, there was a similar Back in the 1960s, there was a similar fashion called urban renewal. It meant tearing down old neighborhoods, often black neighborhoods, and putting in expressways and housing projects and office buildings. They tore down Raleigh's Fourth Ward, Smoky Hollow, and the Old North Side. Plans called for demolishing South Park, Old East Raleigh, and Oakwood and putting in an expressway. But in 1974-75, the city council finally listened to the citizens and put a stop to the plan. Clarence Leitner was mayor. Council members Miriam Block, Reverend Bashford, Randy Hester, Jim Quinn, and Ron Kirschbaum voted down the expressway and saved South Park and Old East Raleigh and Oakwood. We will always be grateful to these excellent leaders. Now, as back then, the planners draw lines around parcels on a map. Now, as back then, what gets forgotten is the people who live on the parcels. People who will get kicked out of their apartments because their landlord sells out to a developer. Homeowners who find their beloved home wedged between tall buildings. And people all over Raleigh who appreciate our historic treasures and hate to keep losing them. And most of these people still don't realize what is coming. But you, city council, were not elected by parcels on a map. You were elected by the people. I know that most of you care about the people and have made a commitment to serve the people. Please remember that commitment as you consider this TOD rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carolyn Sanders.
That's a hard act to follow. I love it whenever he speaks. It's Cara Mayor Baldwin, if you don't mind. It's about the third time you've mispronounced it. So if you could put a little note, that would be great. It's another amazing day in paradise, y'all. It's beautiful outside and I hope y'all get to get out there. Whenever I come to these meetings, as y'all know, my big thing is trauma and understanding trauma. And that's what I hear. And just as a basic lesson on trauma, there's always a need, a very basic need behind what people are saying, no matter how they express it. And the different ways people express it are based on how they were raised, you know, the communities they've been in, the limited beliefs they've been subject to, you know? And so what I hear behind those needs is a lack of trust, perhaps a lack of hope. I hear a lot of fear, you know, because change is scary. And then the other thing that I see is what's coming outside of what y'all are planning. Because the world is changing and I feel like people are gonna start looking for a healthier way of living. And my concern with all the construction and destruction that's happening right now is that it won't serve the needs of the people in 10 to 15 years. It won't serve the capacity of what the earth can handle if we're talking about climate change and things of that nature. When you're talking about people healing from trauma, talking about what natural path physicians will have their clients do, the very basic things they will tell them to do is to go outside and get in the sun because vitamin D is extremely important. They will also say to get their feet in the dirt because the dirt presents a new microbiome. And if you're not familiar with neuroscience or anything like that or just the science that's coming out nowadays, the microbiome is essentially your gut. And there's all these little bugs in there and they determine whether you're healthy or you're sick, essentially. And from your gut to your brain is this nerve that's called the vagus nerve and that's what regulates your nervous system. And we all think that we're individual people, but we're really not because we all live out of our nervous systems, because we all, regardless of what you look like, come from a history of hunter-gatherers. And hunter-gatherers are people who hunted and gathered. But their first sense was for safety. You know, if that tiger was coming after them, they get that spidey sense, what we call it now, right? And so I hear a lot of the lack of safety that's happening for people. And my concern, like, I was walking downtown and it was a cold day and I just wanted some sun. But the buildings are beginning to be so big that the sun doesn't spend very much time on the sidewalks anymore. And so you really have only elite people that are able to access it. And that's scary. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicole Williams.
Is my presentation up? I sent it on time Friday. I had a presentation I sent on Friday for today.
Just a second. Do you know where you sent it?
To the email that's online, to the council.
What time did you send it?
Before 5:00 p.m. It's the same one I sent to you, Mr. Puccini? Puccini is that your name? It's the same one I sent to you. I sent it to him prior and then I turned it in again for today.
We'll find it. Just give us a second.
Okay. Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind, I'm gonna go on to the next speaker while we do this.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Katrina Marvin.
City council, thank you all for allowing the opportunity to speak today. I come before you on the matter of competitive compensation for our police officers. In a city with a growing population, rising crime, understaffed law enforcement, our police officers are overworked and seemingly, based on their pay, undervalued. We're currently faced with officers retiring, officers changing career fields for more competitive pay, and officers moving to surrounding counties for higher compensation. The city needs to increase salaries to be competitive. With Raleigh being the capital city, Raleigh officers should be paid more than that of the smaller surrounding counties. With increased cost of living, our officers cannot afford to live in the city in which they protect and serve. This is an issue. Additionally, we need to look at value-added incentives such as officers being allowed to take their vehicles home, value-added benefits, and just overall increasing funding for our police department. We need to prioritize and come up with a plan to attract and retain a talented workforce. To keep our city safe, we need to act now. Let's be proactive and not reactive. I ask you, how much do you value the safety of the Raleigh citizens? How much do you value your safety, the safety of your children? How much do you value the officers who serve to ensure all of our safety? If you truly value our officers, act now. Prioritize safety. Prioritize our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still trying to figure out the...
We have it.
We have it now.
Thank you.
Nicole, if you want to come up, please.
So to move it, do I move it or do you have to go from slide to slide? Or am I able to do that?
You can miss.
Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, Nicole Williams. Unsheltered and harassed on a daily basis by the warehouse district bar circa 1818 Boxcar and Clint C and Z's Construction. Last week was, last meeting was April 4th, which was also Sexual Assault Awareness Day of Action. And I prepared this presentation because of what I'm going through and the changes I'm trying to help progress in the community. There are some people who want to hear what I have to say, but it's important to discuss the uncomfortable so we can get through the unnecessary and prevent the unnecessary. So sexual harassment... It's not moving. Okay. Sexual harassment... Sorry. First became codified in the 70s and 80s. In the mid 70s, the Women's Liberation Movement began it as a natural extension of the anti-rate, anti-battering movement. And a term was coined by Cornell University employee for Camita Woods when she resigned because her supervisor was touching her. And they refused to transfer her and they refused to give her unemployment. Sexual harassment can be seen in many forms. It can be sexually explicit comments, which I've been experiencing, luring or gazing, unwanted touching, forced to listen to explicit music or via explicit content. Harassers get thrills from humiliating others to see how far they can get with a target, how they respond to do further worse things to them. They do it for ego boost, to maintain privilege, or to gain an assumed authority on the topic of sex. Statistics show that sexual harassment can be connected to race. As you can see, 70% of the women who report sexual harassment are black. And I feel like it is part of the reason that I have experienced it so highly as I have also heard people making monkey noises at me at the same time. Sexual harassment can and has been known to result in more severe offenses when gone unpunished. Sorry. Some community fat is a priority, weak sanctions, general tolerance. Society seems to support sexual violence, male superiority and entitlement, support female superiority and submission, and weak laws. Sexual harassment is against the law according to Title VII of the Civil Rights Movement. And if you get through the slides online, you can look at the resources. The main reason, I wanted to ask the council if you can go ahead and cast your second vote for the anti-harassment.
Nicole, your time is up. Sorry.
Okay. If you can cast your second vote for the anti-harassment against people in public spaces today. Thank you.
I just want to, the last time you spoke, I had asked the city manager to have staff follow up with you. I just would like an update on that.
So we had staff from Housing and Neighborhoods and I think RPD had reached out to Ms. Williams. Were you able to communicate with?
I'm glad you asked that question because nobody has addressed the harassment that has been going on over here. And so that's another reason why I came to city council to address it again today. I did see that you guys voted on Section 23-2033 of the Anti-Harassment Ordinance to, I guess, make it a law for harassment in public spaces. Because harassment is wrong in public spaces, in all spaces, in all cases. And so I feel like it doesn't matter if it's happening inside a building, in work, or in the public. As you know, I'm unsheltered, so I have become a target. And no, someone has yet to come speak to me about it.
Okay. We will make sure that the Acorns Unit, which I thought had already made an attempt to communicate with you, will follow up with you.
They said that somebody would speak to me, but nobody ever followed up.
Okay. As well as Mr. Taylor in Housing and Neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Can I say something? Wasn't it that the Acorns Unit reached out and the process of how they wanted to document your information wasn't something you were comfortable with?
No, Acorns reached out to me about housing. And there was an issue about, I guess, we need to be placed in some type of system where people have all access to my information that I didn't agree with. But they didn't address the issue of the harassment that's going on in the community.
Not you.
So I thought that's why you guys brought the vote for the anti-harassment. I thought that was a response to that.
Yes, and we will have Acorns follow up with you.
Okay. So did he say you already passed it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was stuck outside because there were so many people. I didn't see that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone. Next, we have the report and recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Walter, Raleigh Planning and Development. I'm also joined today by Roberta Fox, Chair of the Planning Commission. We're both ready to answer questions you might have. So just a quick reminder of what we already have scheduled for a public hearing at the next couple of meetings in two weeks, on May 2nd in the afternoon. We have a continuation of the public hearing for the Baker Roofing Property on Lake Wheeler Road, Z 7221. And then in the evening, some continuations of three items. The Oak Hill Drive case, C 38, the Shaw University rezoning, Z 59, as well as properties at Davie Salisbury, Carrera Simak Dow, Z 87. And then, I don't think that's right. Do you agree with me? That's all this afternoon. Yeah. Sometimes there are mistakes in my materials. I apologize. But TCZ 8922 is scheduled for a public hearing the next meeting. Sorry about that. And there's currently nothing scheduled on May 16th. So what's coming out of Planning Commission today? There are a couple of items here. So Rock Quarry Road, this is a request that is, the Planning Commission is looking for an 80-day extension of their review period on this item. We have a comprehensive plan amendment coming out of the reported Planning Commission that we're recommending for a May 2 public hearing. And then two items that are suggested for May 16 public hearing. And I'll walk through each of those. These are in the order that they're on the agenda. So Z 90, Rock Quarry, and Diamond Drive. This is a request to rezone just under 2 acres from R 4 to R 10 with conditions. Planning Commission is requesting an 80-day extension here. Their review period would be extended through July 4. So you could expect to see their report on a June meeting agenda, one of your June meeting agendas. And the issue here is that there is a community well adjacent to the property and the applicant is working with those neighbors on some zoning conditions to address that circumstance. So they are, Planning Commission wants for the applicant to have that time and the applicant would like to have that time. So that's the purpose of the request there. The second item is rezoning on Computer Drive for just under 5 acres. The request would rezone to OX 12 with conditions and also keeping the Shaw 2 in place. Planning Commission recommends approval and the recommended public hearing date here is for May 16. You can see this on the west or the south side of the Belt Line, not too far from North Hills. Z 91 is a number of parcels on Illy Agnes Road, just over, just about 26 and 1/2 acres here. Combination of residential zoning here, going to a unified district of RX 5 with conditions. Planning Commission is recommending approval and the public hearing date suggested here is May 16. This is just north of Renaissance Park and south of Peach Road Park. And then finally, recommended for a May 2 public hearing. This is a staff-initiated comprehensive plan amendment for the Midtown Multimodal Bridge. This would amend the street plan in the comprehensive plan. Was initiated by staff as a result of study that has been done around the Midtown Multimodal Bridge. We had a number of public engagement events around this. There's been a fair amount of media coverage here as well. And this is really implementing, advancing implementation of the Midtown Plan, which was completed a couple of years ago. So this would better reflect the anticipated alignment of the bridge. Planning Commission recommends approval of this and specifically suggested that you should take action on this item before acting on Z 47, which I spoke about just a few moments ago. Creates more certainty about... Creates more certainty about expectation of the property in question in relationship to the alignment. So the public hearing date here is recommended as May two, so that you can consider this before you open the public hearing for the rezoning of Z forty, uh, Z forty-seven, which is in the same vicinity. Uh, what questions could I answer for you before you take your action on the Planning Commission report?
Do we have any questions?
Okay, well, um, is it possible?
Jones and then Patton.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. You, you, I'm sorry. Um, do we have a timing for, like, can we do this in the afternoon on the second of, uh, can, I don't remember all of the cases again, but for this one specifically, just because we have Shaw in the evening and we have a lot of big cases, is there a way to put these in the afternoon?
I think that's a question for.
I'm just asking.
The city attorney. I don't see, I don't.
About which one do you want to do in the, in the afternoon? Is that the question?
I was just asking if it was possible, so the, um, the, because they're not all.
Midtown.
Yeah, the multi, multimodal bridge.
There's no rules one way or the other about what you can do in the afternoon or the evening. Um, you have public hearing times, both times, so it's up to council when they want to set it.
Cool, thank you.
Councilmember Patton, then Melton.
Yeah, mine's not specifically related, but sort of. Councilmember Black and I have differences in our notes about when, um, Z fifty-four, Peace and West is coming back to us. Do you have that at hand? Do we know when that's coming back?
I'm expecting that on May second as well, and I realize that's not noted here. Again, mistakes in my materials, I apologize.
That's fine. I'm glad for the confirmation, thank you.
Awesome. Councilmember Melton.
I, I know I had to step out for a minute, so I may have missed some of this. Just on number five, the, um, Midtown Belt Line crossing. I know we've got, um, a rezoning case that is in some way related to this, and I think that's going to be set May sixteenth, so whatever we do with this, I'd like to just have it heard before we hear that case. So, May second, evening, afternoon, I don't care, I just think it needs to happen, May second.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to grant the eighty-day extension.
Second.
For the review period. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, unanimous, clerk. Then, um, set the date for Z forty-seven and Z ninety-one for May sixteenth. And then the date for, um, CP two twenty-three for May second in the afternoon. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, anyone opposed? Okay, that was unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have special items. First one will be AX twelve twenty, Hodges Road Assemblage.
Good afternoon, Hannah Recau, Planning and Development. So this item and the next rezoning item, uh, go together, so I'm going to provide kind of a joint presentation and then the council can act separately. Um, so this is AX twelve twenty, an annexation, a request for the Hodges Road Assemblage, six parcels, over five hundred acres. Um, really the action here is just to set the public hearing date and the recommended date is, uh, May second. And then, uh, Hodges Road Assemblage, Z sixteen twenty, um, this rezoning case is ready to have the public hearing date set. They have submitted all their, um, required signatures and revisions, um, made revisions related to fire service and parks, uh, facility contribution. So the recommended hearing date for that is May second as well.
Council, um, Mayor Proton.
Um, just based on the calendar and the schedule, I would like to, um, move that the public hearing for the annexation AX twelve twenty and rezoning Z sixteen, um, twenty, set for June sixth.
All in favor? Aye?
Can I just add one thing that's not related to a vote? In the body of the agenda, there's a discrepancy versus what's listed in the backup about how much land is being dedicated for the fire station, so just want to flag that for next time.
And on that particular case, um, I do want to make sure that we have some information also, um, perhaps it's from Planning and Development, um, about, uh, the idea of some of the open space, um, public park that was, has been discussed as related to this case and where that's at, that particular discussion. Um, and I know there's also been some conversations around landscaping, um, you know, given this large site. Um, you know, we have some rules out there in terms of not planning, um, you know, invasive species, but there's been additional conversation about, um, focusing on native species that really, um, are in concert with the, you know, local, you know, flora and fauna there. Um, so I just want to put that out there, that that's a conversation, um, I'd like to make sure is, is happening behind the scenes and, um, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
What do we do about Skyline Bridge?
Um, next we have, um, rezoning Z sixty-seven, twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Sarah Shaughnessy, Raleigh Planning and Development. Um, so this is a rezoning request to rezone approximately eighteen acres, um, from CX three conditional use and planned development to CX twenty conditional use. Um, you heard this case at your last city council meeting, um, and the public hearing was closed. The applicant has submitted new conditions but is requesting a deferral to your next council meeting so that they can further revise their conditions.
Okay, so that would be deferred to the, um, yeah, during the day. How are we loading up during the day?
And this would be a special item, yes. Um, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, is that a motion?
Move to hold this until May second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, that was unanimous, thank you. Next we have the report and recommendation of the city manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Have quite a few items under my report today, but we will try to be good stewards of our time. The first of which is a reimbursement agreement for the Greenway at Crabtree Creek. Um, so we have TJ McCourts from PRCR here to present that item.
Afternoon, Mayor, Council. Uh, yeah, today we're seeking your authorization to execute a reimbursement agreement and associated budget transfers, uh, that will provide us, uh, the ability to construct a Greenway Bridge across Crabtree Creek. A little bit of context here for where this project is located here off of Hodges Road near Wake Forest and Atlantic Avenue. Uh, this project's going to provide safe bicycle and pedestrian connectivity, uh, essentially connecting in, uh, from Industrial Drive and the Crabtree Creek Trail north of Crabtree Creek to the, uh, existing neighborhoods to the south, as well as, uh, the Hodges Street multifamily development coming in at nine twelve Hodges Street. Uh, this project is recommended in the Midtown Area Plan. Uh, you can see it highlighted here as the east pedestrian bridge in this area. It was also anticipated and accommodated in the, uh, planned development for nine twelve Hodges Street. I do want to emphasize it's not required as a part of that rezoning case, uh, but the, uh, reimbursement agreement was proposed as part of it and the, the site plan for the case. Uh, you can see here, uh, again, is consistent with, with where this bridge would be located and the developer would be providing a pedestrian passage, a, a multi-use path. Uh, you can see through the center of the development there, connecting with Mills Street and Bel Air Avenue, uh, the existing neighborhood to the south. Reimbursements, uh, reimbursement agreements like this in general, uh, we have the authority as a city, uh, through North Carolina general statutes, and we did pass a local ordinance just last year, uh, to exercise the authority to enter into these sorts of reimbursement agreements for the provision of public infrastructure. This would be the first time that the city is exercising, uh, our authority under these statutes and that local ordinance. I also want to acknowledge, uh, the, the twenty seventeen policy we have on public-private partnerships. Uh, this agreement is not formally a public-private partnership of the type anticipated under that policy. That's, uh, really set forth for fifty-fifty cost-share agreements for roadway and transportation improvements. Uh, this reimbursement agreement for public infrastructure, uh, is not subject, again, to that fifty-fifty cost-share policy, but does meet a lot of the criteria that that, that policy sets out for guidance, um, in terms of the public benefits provided, uh, the, the location within an economic development area, the consistency with the council adopted area plans. Uh, so, again, the selection of this project was consistent with the policy, but formally speaking, uh, not, not subject to it. Uh, I'll provide a quick summary of the agreement. Uh, there, the, the division of responsibilities here, essentially what's going to be happening is the developer is going to be responsible for procuring professional services for everything from, uh, design permitting, uh, engineering, all the way through construction of the project under the oversight of city staff. Uh, the developer will be managing the bidding and, and construction process in accordance with public bidding requirements, uh, just as if the city were to be bidding out this project ourselves. Uh, the city will have review and approval authority at various stages throughout the process, uh, oversight, again, of the design, uh, as well as the ability to, to audit, uh, all services provided, uh, and, and fees associated with the project. At the conclusion of the project, uh, we'll be reimbursing the developer for costs associated. Uh, in terms of cost share, the, the developer will be providing approximately four hundred thousand dollars, which will cover the, uh, purchase cost of the prefabricated bridge structure itself, and the city will be responsible for cost outside, uh, of that, that bridge structure cost. Uh, we have a number of provisions in terms of risk management, uh, built into this agreement that provides the developer, as well as the city, with, with certain assurances. I want to highlight here, uh, that the city does have the option, uh, at three project milestones, so this will be at schematic design, about thirty percent design, as we get to ninety percent design documents, and then, again, before the project is put out to bid, uh, we will have the, again, uh, uh, ability to review the designs, the, the cost estimates as, as we progress through that design process, and, uh, the authority to terminate the agreement if, if those costs begin to exceed, uh, what we anticipate Again, we expect the total project cost, uh, to come in at a maximum of one point nine two five million, which would mean that the, the city's maximum potential liability here would be one point five two five million, uh, which is, uh, the total project budget that we are, uh, seeking your authorization to, uh, consolidate today into one project account. Uh, the majority of the funding is going to come from the twenty twenty-two Parks Bond through our Neighborhood and Community Connections Program, which is all about, uh, projects just like this, providing existing and new development with walkable access to the parks and Greenway resources we have today. Uh, and we will be transferring five hundred twenty-five thousand from our, uh, open space facility fee account, uh, to serve this area of the city. So the recommendation before you, still authorize the city manager to execute this agreement along with the associated budget transfers. Uh, with that, I will wrap and, uh, open the floor to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Harrison, then Patton.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. So just to confirm, um, the developer is contributing four hundred thousand dollars for the bridge?
That's correct.
And that particular, um, project, the nine one two Hodges Street, do you remember the acreage on that or number of units?
Uh, I don't, I think it's around twenty acres and if I remember correctly, just under four hundred and fifty, uh, residential units maximum.
Twenty acres, four hundred and fifty units.
I, I believe that's correct, I don't know if, uh, anybody.
I can look it up later.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good, okay. And can you tell me, how is a reimbursement agreement, is it different from a development agreement that we've been talking about?
Yes, it, it definitely is. So the development agreements, when we speak about those formally, those are, again, formally tied with the rezoning. Um, this one is, is separate. Uh, the developer came to us after the rezoning was approved, um, and we negotiated this contract separately through our Urban Projects Group, uh, again, for the provision of this, this public infrastructure, uh, uh, which will benefit the development, right? The, the developer sees a benefit, uh, uh, to doing this and that's why they're willing, uh, to voluntarily enter into this cost-share agreement. Um, but, again, strictly speaking, it is not tied directly to the rezoning, so it is not a formal development agreement.
Thank you. Councilmember Patton.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Um, just a couple of questions for me. One, um, the open space facility fee, this was a new language, can you zoom out and tell us more about that?
Absolutely. So our, uh, open space facility fee program, these are essentially impact fees that are assessed to all new residential development in the city. Um, they run, you know, they vary from zone to zone across the city. You can think of approximately twelve hundred dollars per residential unit is, is what's typically assessed, that it's, you know, assessed for both single-family and new multifamily development. Those impact fees are designed to offset the cost of serving new development, uh, with access to parks and recreation resources. So they help us, uh, acquire new open space or fund capacity building improvements to our existing parks, so the use of those funds to, uh, contribute to a project like this is, is right in line with our facility fee policy.
So those, um, funds come in through with the, from the developer, when they're developing?
That's right, yeah, they're, they're tied to your building permits.
Got it, okay. Excellent, helpful. Um, the other thing I wanted to check in on, I know you, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the, like, subject to the same bidding, uh, stipulations of the city. So that includes things like WMBE participation and stuff, or like, what kinds of, what kinds of requirements will they beholden to?
Definitely. I think I'll defer, uh, to Ken Bowers maybe from the Urban Projects Group to speak to this, I don't want to, don't want to misspeak on this one, the statutes are a little bit complicated.
So from memory, it's Article eight of, um, I think, chapter one, one forty-three is, provides the, uh, provides the bidding, the public bidding requirements for all public projects and the reimbursement authority we're using, which is commonly used for partnerships of this nature, um, does require that the, um, you can't use this authority to evade the public bidding requirements, so even though they are going to bid the project and finance it and we don't pay them back until the project is over, um, they're bidding that, at least the park part of it, as, um, if, you, following the same Article eight procedures. There are, um, there are MWB requirements in there, of course, the city has a target of fifteen percent. Um, I believe, and I've, maybe Robin or someone else from the Attorney's Office has confirmed that that is, um, that the state doesn't oppose an additional target, but they do require that to be part of the bidding process.
Any other questions? Okay, do you have a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Do you have a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that was unanimous. Thank you for the presentation and also excited to see this come to fruition. So our next item, you will recall from our community initiatives, um, bucket of ARPA funding, we had stipulated a million dollars for our arts agencies. Um, today Sarah Powers from PRCR is going to bring forward phase one of what some potential, um, funding might look like for some of our, um, arts partners.
Good afternoon, I'm Sarah Powers, the Executive Director of Raleigh Arts, and I'm pleased to present this information that was put together by a lot of people, including the Arts Commission and S.A. Corn, um, and other, uh, city staff with some expertise in the area of ARPA funding. So this is the first phase of what we think will be multi-phased approach to, um, investing this funding in the arts community. The background briefly is, um, this money was allocated, um, for arts agency grants. The commission was directed to create an additional process. Um, so far, they have done a bit of work to do a, uh, needs analysis, identify the biggest issues that are still facing the arts, um, community since it's been a long three years for our arts organization with some ups and downs. Um, and now they're in a program design phase, we're, uh, looking at ways to invest this money, but also work out the details of applications and how can this funding get into the hands that need it and efficiently and follow all the ARPA rules. Quick slide about what are issues for everybody, but certainly the arts are hit hard by affordability, the afford, being able to afford space to produce their work, to rehearse, for artists to live in our community, um, it's a little bit of a crisis, to understate it a lot. Also the human resources, we have a lot of transition, a lot of turnover, um, it's hard to make art, it's hard to be Executive Director in a grassroots organization, and we've got a lot of new ones. So we see that's an issue that we're probably going to want to address, um, in the arts community in general. And then universal access, we want to continue the work our groups have done to increase accessibility, um, for people with disabilities in the arts, but also there's a lot of work left to be done and, um, I think some of the accommodations that were made to, to get through COVID are very, um, on the top of mind for these organizations to keep those going, um, and maybe to make some of them more permanent, as they were able to reach a lot of new people with virtual programming and the like. I'm sure everyone knows a lot about ARPA right now, but who can ever know enough? So the city was awarded seventy-three point two million. Of course, there's appropriate uses, um, these are very summarized from the feds, but also the, the city did narrow that down to some specific recovery efforts. This would be in the economic recovery bucket, um, focused very much on the, the industries that were in, um, most affected by the close down. We did a lot of benchmarking, there's a lot of great work being done, um, throughout the country, but also trying to find, um, programs that really had the impact that we would. that really had the impact that we would like to see here in Raleigh. Denver Arts and Venues gets a special call out because they took a lot of time with us to sort of go over their program and their ups and downs and losses learned as we worked to figure out this puzzle for the, what we're calling Phase 1, is the City Arts Venue Reactivation Initiative, looking at a few different impacts. There's obviously affordable venue issues. We wanted to make it at least one of the phases something that the funding, they wouldn't need to be doing all the reporting, that city staff could take on some of that burden, and a little streamlined approach. This, May 17th was quite a while ago. We don't want this to sort of wait any longer, but that assessment and knowing those, the critical needs was pretty key to get to this point. Some of the side benefits of the program we're going to propose is that if you fund these organizations that lower their production costs, they can, you know, do more downtown, get people out and about, as well as the third-party vendors that work with the Performing Arts Centers are typically small vendors, small businesses and local. So the overview, the details are that this would be focused on arts facility the city owns, the third-party production costs, quite a bit of money to put on a show. Some of those are labor, security, all sorts of things that are paid for, just sort of the direct cost to the the production. About $300,000 is what the, we think this phase could fund and make the difference. The application process will be streamlined, and the payment would be handled with credit. There's a city bill, so there would be less of a timeline, shorten the timeline in getting this done. Speaking of timeline, if approved, application period would begin in May, give them enough, everyone enough time to apply, but it would be a simple grant application to get what we need. And the commission has agreed and is looking forward to going over everything and coming back with their funding recommendations in June to get it done quickly. Lines with a whole lot of work, especially for affordability, but also making sure we are not putting unnecessary burdens on our arts organizations. And of course, this, a reminder, this is the first phase, $300,000. The future phases will be able to take another look at long-term affordability, space issues, and make some investments in the areas for capacity building, rent relief, things like that, but also that a phase to focus on the underrepresentation issue for people with disabilities. Quite, as I mentioned before, there's quite a lot of interest. Our community, our organizations in Raleigh have been recognized nationally for their work in arts and accessibility, and we, and the Arts Commission and our other staffs, I think the investments in disability and arts accessibility will go a long way. Questions?
Do you have any questions for Sarah? Councilmember Black?
Hi, Sarah.
Hi.
So I guess I'm just a little, I needed some clarity. So $300,000 would go to supporting the affordability of short-term rentals, and it's specifically for?
City-owned venues.
Uh-huh.
Largely, this will go to groups that perform at the Martin Marietta Center for Performing Arts, because that's really where there's the sort of third-party vendors, those sort of costs are incurred.
Do you guys have any plans for sort of like, public-private partnerships in regards to this, like in future phases?
Yes. I think the affordability is going to be a huge component that will end up with some partnerships.
I'm, I'm really receptive to this. I consider myself, well, somebody, somebody said today that they consider me an environmental creative. I do run a nonprofit, and we do do events around arts tied to climate justice, and venues fees are so expensive, like $3,000 to $4,000 just for like a couple hours of use, and it's really hard for smaller nonprofits that are doing work in different capacities to really like be able to get any donations or make any profits off of what they're doing. So this seems really cool. I just wanted to understand, like, what, I understood it, but I didn't understand, like, the process of like how the money would be working.
Sure, and this is sort of a narrow scope to start, but the idea of, you know, rent relief or some sort of more affordability in venues, we can do a little more research into the best ways to sort of make sure that organizations can get what they need.
Do you guys have a list of organizations you're kind of already looking to work with, or like a repository of people?
No, I mean, I think within this phase, there will be some limits on groups that are going to perform in the venues we've identified, but outside of that, I think it'll, it'll be much more open, and no, we're not, you know, all the arts organizations and beyond.
Councilmember Patton?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm super excited about a focus on, like, disability access. My mom uses a hearing aid, and we've tried to see performances at Martin Marietta, and it can be challenging, and there's an effort, they have like a Bluetooth situation. It's very cool, but a little bit challenging. I see in your slides pictures of the ballet and the symphony, and I was curious if they are sort of going to be the primary recipients of this impact, or if like smaller, newer, different organizations will also be.
Those are the, the first slide is all the resident companies, so they would all be fairly clearly eligible for the funding, but any grassroots organizations, Triangle Youth Music, sort of, there's lots of groups that are smaller that perform in these venues that would, and third part, the third-party vendors, arts access, and some of the accessibility accommodations are absolutely on that list of eligible items, and I think especially for the small ones, that, you know, everything's going up for everyone, so all the, all the costs go up, and you don't want those to see that cut, because you're sort of leaving people out.
Sarah, I have a question. Is 300,000 enough?
Like, back of the napkin math, I think we should be able to do what we need to do for this phase, but we know where to find you. The Arts Commission will come back with the recommendations, and that's, I think we we feel comfortable starting at 300,000, knowing that that's the first step to get that moving.
Okay, so there will be 700,000 left in that bucket. All right? Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve then. Do you have a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. That was unanimous.
And next, as we know, our strategic plan is a living and breathing document that kind of guides our work throughout the city. We have Alec Vasquez from the Office of Strategy and Innovation going to talk to us about some of the revisions to our strategic plan.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Alexander Vazquez, and like Michelle said, I am with the Office of Strategy and Innovation. I'm here today to present proposed revisions to the city's strategic plan. Unfortunately, I do not have Play-Doh for y'all today, but I'm hoping that learning about some of the proposed revisions, particularly those centered around closing particular initiatives, will bring you just as much joy as that Play-Doh. Before I highlight proposed revisions, I want to quickly review information shared with you during January's council retreat. First and foremost, what is the strategic plan? Our strategic plan is a five-year document that translates city council's vision for the future into actionable strategy. It's a document that clearly articulates our goals and describes the work that needs to be undertaken in order to reach our desired outcomes. It's also a document that facilitates bringing new ideas into the organization. As a living document, the strategic plan gets updated on a regular basis to ensure we respond to changing community needs. In terms of strategic plan development and implementation, council and staff play distinct but complementary roles. Council establishes priorities. These take the form of key focus areas in the strategic plan, and in some cases, objectives as well. Keeping council priorities top of mind, staff develop objectives and initiatives, and these are ultimately brought to council for approval. This gives council an opportunity to confirm that the objectives and initiatives align with their priorities. When appropriate, staff develop revisions to the plan. Because the strategic plan is a formally adopted document by council, any changes that we make to the plan must be approved by council as well, and this is why I'm here today. After reviewing plan implementation progress, staff develop five proposed changes to the strategic plan. The recommended revisions are intended to better leverage existing resources, better describe the work that staff is pursuing, or to mark initiatives complete. All proposed revisions were reviewed and supported by key focus area core teams. As you may recall, these are teams chaired by the Deputy City Manager or one of the three Assistant City Managers, and are comprised of department heads and assistant directors, and together they provide general support and guidance to initiative teams. The first proposed revision is part of the Arts and Cultural Resources Key Focus Area, and it includes two parts. The first part is to mark ACR 1.3 complete. Staff recommends this because all milestones associated with this initiative are complete, and the major deliverable associated with this initiative, the Public Art Plan, was reviewed and adopted by council last November. The second part to this revision is to create a new initiative focused on promoting public art. The proposed initiative wording for the new initiative, ACR 1.4, is included on this slide. Adding ACR 1.4 to the strategic plan is intended to highlight that public art continues to be a priority in the city. The next three revisions are in the Economic Development and Innovation Key Focus Area. The first of these proposed revisions is to merge EDI 1.1 and 1.2. Staff recommends making this change to eliminate redundant activities. Not only are EDI 1.1 and 1.2 closely aligned, they both focus on promoting and supporting workforce development activities in the city. EDI 1.1 also replicates the work being done by the Capital Area Workforce Development Board. So merging these two initiatives will better leverage resources to support workforce development opportunities and activities in the city. The next proposed revision is to mark EDI 2.3 complete. All initiative milestones associated with this initiative but one are complete. As part of this initiative, staff worked with stakeholders in the community to assess the state of innovation in Raleigh. The assessment resulted in a report that has informed the work that the Office of Strategy and Innovation carries out, as well as the way that we choose to engage with the innovation ecosystem. The remaining milestone, which is focused on developing and reporting innovation-related metrics, will be an ongoing operationalized effort led by the Office of Strategy and Innovation in collaboration with stakeholders in the innovation ecosystem. The next proposed revision is to merge EDI 3.1 and 3.2. Both initiatives focus on improving the resources, information, and support that the city provides residents looking to start a business, as well as existing businesses looking to grow. Merging EDI 3.1 and 3.2 will eliminate duplicative efforts and also help ameliorate some staffing issues within those initiative teams. Thus, this change will help better support Raleigh's business community moving forward. The final proposed revision is to mark Organizational Excellence 5.3 complete. This initiative was focused on conducting the community engagement study, and as you are well aware, that study has been completed, and the study recommendations were the impetus for creating the Office of Community Engagement and the hiring of Ms. Taisha Hinton. The Office of Community Engagement is now implementing the remaining recommendations stemming from that study. Closing out OE 5.3 will not mean that our strategic plan will lack a community engagement-related initiative. Future work related to community engagement will be reported through the remaining Objective 3 initiatives, chiefly OE 5.2, which is an initiative focused on obtaining regular feedback from community members on city operations, and then using that information collecting it to make improvements. So staff recommends that council adopt the revisions as proposed, but if council asks feedback on the proposed revisions or has suggestions for additional plan revisions, we can come back at a later time with an updated list of changes. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is a long-awaited one. For several years, we've kind of been trying to process and figure out how we can be more intentional about our procurement practices and how we partner with agencies throughout the city and this region. So today, we will bring forward our findings of our MWBE and disparity study. We have Lakeisha Shaw from the Office of MWBE over in Office of Equity and Inclusion, the Department of Equity and Inclusion, to introduce this item.
Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. So I am here to introduce Mr. Dave Miller with Miller 3 Consulting and Incorporated. Mr. Miller will present the disparity study final report and recommendations, and after the presentation, I will return to talk about staff next steps and answering the remaining questions that you all may have.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Ms. Shaw, and good evening to the mayor and distinguished guests at the dais. Bring your greetings from Atlanta, Georgia. As Ms. Shaw indicated, my name is Dave Miller, and we serve as your disparity study consultant for this effort. I want to first acknowledge this body, this body's commitment and courage to commission a disparity study. It is something that is an undertaking, and is a really, a good evaluation of how the city goes about procuring and some of the impediments that minority women-owned businesses may face throughout that process. And so, to the mayor, to the Assistant City Managers, as well as the staff who work with us on this collaborative effort, a heartfelt thank you is extended. A brief outline of our presentation. I'll begin to share a little bit about our approach and methodology in conducting disparity studies, share both quantitative findings as well as qualitative findings, and then close with the recommendations. Our approach and methodology. In conducting disparity studies, we deploy a 10-part methodology that is grouped in three distinct areas, beginning with our industry analysis. Inside of that industry analysis, we're seeking to understand the legal environment for which the city of Raleigh operates. In addition to the legal analysis, we conduct a procurement review. That review is designed to understand how policy and practice intersect, and where there are gaps in policy and practice, what may be the driving forces to that. Next, we move to our statistical analysis, and inside of our statistical analysis, we are identifying the relevant market for each of the procurement categories under evaluation as a part of the, as a part of the disparity study. The availability analysis, which is the most contentious element of a disparity study, is also captured inside of our statistical analysis. Utilization is a more straightforward and direct element of disparity studies. That is, in effect, whom the city is engaging with at both the prime and subcontractor level, and then the proportion of availability compared to proportion of avail, utilization is what drives the disparity study, disparity ratio and computation. Lastly, the market analysis is where we seek to understand how businesses may be performing in the public sector compared to the private sector. The market analysis helps us to understand whether or not the city of Raleigh is either an active or passive participant in any discrimination that may be found, but also points to some of the other factors that may impact business creation and business formation, to include educational attainment, gross receipts, number of employees, et cetera. After those 10 elements are conducted, it leads to conclusions and recommendations. So a little bit more about our statistical findings. We first begin with the relevant market. The relevant market is defined as where the preponderance of your utilization occurs. We set a threshold of 70 to 75%. So for each of the procurement types before you, A&E Design Services, the relevant market is the city of Raleigh's metropolitan statistical area. We expected that. What was a bit surprising was in construction and construction-related services, that the relevant market extended beyond the MSA. And what that invariably means is there could be some opportunities to look more local for the city of Raleigh to engage more local businesses in the construction space. Non-professional services and professional services, that is sort of a typical response that extends beyond the MSA and at the state level. And then lastly, goods and supplies, given the size of the city and its buying authority, it truly does extend outside of the state. Availability. This is a fairly busy slide here, and what we attempted to do was to capture availability across each of the distinct procurement types, as well as by racial and ethnic designation. So the best way to look at this is to look at each bar and then its distribution of availability at the bottom here. And so I'll highlight a few. For example, for A&E Design Services, WBE participation or white female-owned firms participation was at 15.38%. Comparatively, non- or majority-owned firms' availability for A&E services was at 80%. Moving across for construction, similarly, there was a relatively high participation amongst WBEs. If you look at some of the specific ethnic designations, the highest MBE participation, sorry, availability was nearly 9% for African-American-owned firms. Data Axel is a marketplace availability measure. Said differently, it is unlike RWA, which is specific to the city of Raleigh's data. Data Axel is more of a phone book. It is synonymous with Dunn and Bradstreet. The beauty of it, it helps- The beauty of it is it helps us to understand from a numerical number how and what opportunities may exist for outreach initiatives and outreach efforts. I mentioned that construction was expanding beyond the MSA, and so Data Axel is a source and tool that we utilize to help better understand availability outside of RWA. Similar depiction here, and if you compare those two, you can see how availability may shift. I will point out here that in A&E Design Services compared to RWA, non-minority-owned firms for Data Axel is roughly 60% compared to RWA before, where it's higher at 80%. Utilization. It is the most straightforward element of disparity studies, as I mentioned. Miller 3 Consulting looks at utilization at three distinct points. At the point of award, which is typically indicated by a notice of award or notice of intent. At the point of a purchase or the issuance, which is where funds are encumbered against the budget. And then lastly, at the point of payment. Based on the most robust data element, we make programmatic recommendations based on contract awards for construction and construction-related services. The question is why? For construction, where subcontractor participation is considered, we really focus on that space because we know in trades, those are opportunities for minority and women-owned businesses to participate. Conversely, in A&E Design Services or goods and supplies, where there's less subcontractor opportunities, we rely strictly on purchase orders to determine it. Now, our statistical team does a really good job of bifurcating our utilization. We do it across procurement categories initially, within triage, and separate that based on race, gender, and ethnicity, and then make the determination around relevant market. And where possible, we distinguish between prime participation and subcontractor participation. And then lastly, against informal procurements and formal procurements. Said differently, your formal procurement thresholds. For the study period, fiscal year 17 through 21, there was about $1.5 billion in payments made by the city of Raleigh. In purchase orders, there was about $1.9 billion in spend. And what we do is to segment that across procurement types and then look at a participation across racial and ethnic groups. So the way you view this slide before you, focusing on construction, is in the construction space, MWBEs fared or received about 21% of the contract awards. That is, across MBEs to include each of the ethnic groups, Asian-Americans, Hispanic-Americans, African-Americans, as well as WBEs. In goods and supplies, there was significant utilization of non-minority-owned firms. For us, that means there are opportunity areas for the city of Raleigh to really focus and target on maybe usage of shelter markets, which I'll talk about in the recommendation space. Across the board, non-minority-owned firms, with the exception of construction, where subcontractor opportunities are considered, achieve over 90% for purchase orders. I mentioned that the disparity ratio considers a proportion of availability against a proportion of utilization. And the format itself is a fairly elementary one, where that percentage, because we're looking for parity, that is, whether or not the city is utilizing a particular group in relation to their availability in the marketplace. And when that happens, parity exists. And parity is depicted on this slide here by the red diagonal line. When utilization exceeds availability, overutilization is then identified. When utilization is below availability, then that signifies underutilization. At that point in time, we will test to see if that underutilization reached statistical significance. If it does reach statistical significance, it then allows for the city of Raleigh to make programmatic initiatives to redress that impact. Now, as I mentioned, one is parity, and so the best way to think about this is anything above one suggests overutilization. Anything below one suggests underutilization. And whereas the significance test is an S, the combination of underutilization and reaching statistical significance are those areas which programmatic initiatives and goals could be developed and instituted by the city of Raleigh. This same slide is, this is a better visual of that same slide. The dark horizontal line is at parity at one, and any bar that exceeds that parity line represents overutilization. Any bar that is below represents underutilization. And then the statistical significance test is indicated in red. And so if I were to look at construction, for example, which is the second quadrant, I wish I had a way to point, which is here, you can see that each ethnic group is below the line of parity, and they all reached statistical significance, with the exception of WBE-owned firms, which is very, very close to that line of parity, and did not reach statistical significance. So the disparity study itself looks both quantitatively and qualitatively. The precedent that governs disparity studies, or which is another name for a factual predicate, is the Richmond v. Crosser decision. And inside of that decision, it required both sides. You know, data tells a story, qualitative findings and anecdotes helps you to understand that story a little bit better. So as part of our qualitative findings, we consider your procurement process, get some anecdotes from the community, and then share how management and technical assistance providers are faring in assisting both minority and non-minority-owned firms in becoming more commercially viable. So some general observations that are impacting MWBE participation in the city's procurement system during our study period. Some of the things that came to mind were around the repeated, or perception of repeated use of the same vendors. In a really defined and forward-thinking environment, the forecasting of procurement opportunities are very, very valuable and ensure that minority and women-owned businesses have the opportunity to react, right? And that reaction is, in part, based on the city's ability to notify of those opportunities. And notifying is a little bit beyond when an RFP hits the street. The notification should be based on activity that may occur nine to 12 months ahead of time. And generally speaking, when you make the business community aware of the buying power of the city, it then makes the city a bit more attractive for them to participate in those opportunities. Anecdotal. Anecdotal is where perceptions and experiences come to light. We thought and we looked for a response rate from the surveys. Our goal is 200. We received over 400 responses to that survey, which says to us that there's very good interest in this, and businesses and folks were very, very excited to share what they perceive to be their experience and their perceptions in trying to do work with the city of Raleigh. Some of the highlights of those perceptions and experience around the lack of visibility and transparency. There's always a push for vendors to become hub-certified, and for some businesses, that alone can be a cumbersome process. More importantly, while hub-certification is advantageous in most areas, it is not a guarantee that you would be utilized by municipalities. And so it's just one step in the process. We also conducted one-on-one interviews. We had over 19 participants in those one-on-one interviews, and while our focus group participation level was low, we were encouraged by, again, the abundance of responses to our survey. Race-neutral analysis and findings. As a part of this element of the disparity study, we reviewed and spoke with a number of race-neutral providers and programs. Inside those conversations, we were focused more on outcomes and not output. Output is defined as who you serviced, how long you serviced. Outcomes are whether or not, how you serviced those businesses resulted in them being more viable, commercially viable and attractive in the marketplace. Some of the things that came out of that was limited networking opportunities. Many times municipalities engage in matchmaking efforts as a part of their outreach initiatives, and while those are generally good, most times they lack in the space where you're not tying them to tangible opportunities or forthcoming. And so to mirror those and to marry those two things are very, very impactful and value-added to whether or not you will be engaging minority and women on participation. So recommendations. I generally start these conversations around what I believe is the goal and the objective for clients. And I'll say it here and now because I think it is good as a lead-in to the recommendations. We believe that the objective for the city of Raleigh is to operate an open, fair, transparent, inclusive, fiscally responsible procurement environment. That's the belief. How you go about achieving that, what tactics you employ, what strategies you utilize, really is to achieve, to meet that objective. The objective does not change. You have the ability to shift based on the effectiveness of your strategies, but you do not move the line in terms of what the objective is. So brief overview of our recommendations. There are in four buckets here. In those cases where there is statistical significant underutilization, that supports establishments of race-conscious initiatives. Adjusting some of your procurement systems and cultural changes may be advantageous because we really want to focus on those things that drive the buy decision. And then to the extent that the city can leverage all components of a successful MWBE program, we encourage. So a little bit more about the findings of disparity study and how race-conscious initiatives can be utilized in those who are impacted. This is just a narrative of the data slide that depicted the disparity ratios before. And so each of the procurement types are listed on the far left. Those for which you can establish some race and gender-conscious initiatives are in that middle lane, and then those where the groups did not reach statistical significance, you should still harness and put more support around your race and gender-neutral efforts for those entities. Procurement systems. Many times municipalities are focused on goal attainment, and while that is great, that is a downstream view of things. And many times, goal attainment is the ceiling, right, as opposed to the floor. And so what we suggest to clients, if you operate a goal-based environment, that minimally it should be the floor. But when you think about an inclusive procurement environment, that is an upstream evaluation, what is considering how buyers are making the buy decision, particularly those that are in the informal element, where it's not a formal procurement or a response for qualifications or a proposal submitted in reaction to an RFP. While the city operates a decentralized procurement environment, the establishment of that objective and ensuring that it plays out across department is tantamount to ensure that participation and the view exists across all engaging departments. Here are the six components of the MWBE program, and I'm trying to be mindful of the time. The disparity study, which I think is attached to the item, at least the executive summary, is an over 500-page document, and so condensing that in bite sizes is what we attempted to do here today. But the six elements of the MWBE program is listed at the very, very top. I'll highlight a few. I talked about the certification process and its impact on MWBEs. Not a guarantee for any contractual work, but it does check the box in terms of you meeting the requirements to distinguish yourself as a hub-certified firm. MWBE conclusion and bid opportunity. What we found is that there is significant participation at the subcontractor level by minority and women-owned firms. The question becomes whether or not those firms can elevate to the prime level. Said differently, the city has a heavy reliance around compliance to achieve MWBE participation as opposed to a direct relationship with the MWBE community. Organization performance. What gets measured gets done. You've heard that phrase a number of different times, and we've seen it to be a value-add to organizations where you really look at the buy decision, which buyers are performing well in this space, which buyers may not be. And so you can take those lessons learned and spread them out across the entire organization. Lastly, some of the race-neutral goal programs of non-discrimination. Many entities establish good faith efforts. Whether or not you have local business goals, I talked about those relevant markets that are extending beyond your metropolitan statistical areas. Leveraging both MWBEs as well as veterans, there's a, and it has been an increase more recently, in ensuring inclusive and equitable access to the LGBTQ community. And with that, I'll ask Ms. Shaw to come back up to share with you what staff recommendations are, and myself and my team are available to field any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for that great presentation, and thank you to you and the project team of Miller 3 Consulting Incorporated for all the great work related to this project. So staff is currently working to develop and fine-tune a three- to five-year implementation plan in response to the disparity study and the recommendations specifically. So if directed by council, we will want to come back at a future date to propose that said implementation plan to city council, and so we will be looking to city council to receive the final disparity study report today as information and provide direction to staff on next steps.
Mayor Porcha?
First of all, thank you. This has been a very long time coming in trying to get to this point or this study. I understand coming back with a three- to five-year plan. I will ask that we also put in some short-term goals, six months to a year, that we can start working on and tackling now. I know it's 20-plus departments that we're looking to change the culture of how we process and how we do things, but it's something that must be done for us to move forward, to really say we want to be inclusive and make sure everyone has opportunity. So again, like I said, it's been a long time coming. We've been talking about this since I first got on council in 2015. So I'm glad to finally see that it's here and I'm on council when it comes back. But again, you know, I understand three to five years, but we need to look at what are some short-term things we can do, who we may be able to partner with, and what are some best practices that we can work as we continue to move the overall ship forward.
Yes, and thank you for that. We have actually already began to identify some low-hanging fruit that we can go ahead and work on in the first six months to a year, developing some internal committees and working groups so that we can really fine-tune and have some strategy around what we would do. But we have already actually identified some actions that we can actually take, movement on now, so we'll definitely be back with that as well. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, too. This has been a long time coming. One of the things that I think is really important is being more proactive and also having a partner with a communications team to get out the word. Think, you know, people who are well-established MWBEs, they know how to do business with the city of Raleigh. It's newer companies that are forming who are not sure, they don't know, and really that's our obligation. So the outreach, the proactive type of communication piece, I think, is really critical, and we'd like to see that part of the plan.
Certainly. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
Thank you for the presentation. It may be helpful in some ways to sort of synthesize some of that information for the general public because I'm not really sure folks are clear about the numbers in terms of the lack of participation, because it was a very detailed presentation, it's 500 pages, but maybe coming back with something that can just kind of give some percentages and things like that so that the general public understands what the disparities are, because I don't know that that really came through very clear today. The second thing I would say- The second thing I would say is, I know there's some, you know, you had some comments about the HUB office, but that's like one of the central places that primes connect with MWBE firms. So certainly want to, you know, reinforce utilization of that as a resource, but there are a number of different organizations locally. We've got Hispanic contractors groups, we've got African-American contractors groups, you've got a number of, you know, Black Chambers and other organizations. And so I guess to echo some of what's already been said, I'd like to see more outreach with these organizations that you have more small minority-owned businesses that are members of but don't necessarily understand the opportunities and not really getting connected with what we're doing with the city. There's a great outreach event a couple of weeks ago over at Southeast Raleigh High School. I actually attended that event, so I know that's one thing, but that's just once a year. And folks still miss opportunities with doing business with the city, but I try to look at all of our consent agenda items to see what the process is, and I think we've got to do a better job of being more diligent about making sure the folks that we're awarding contracts to have done a thorough job of trying to reach out, not just to the HUB office, but to some of these other smaller organizations to make sure they're really trying to tap into minority-owned businesses and give them an opportunity to participate in some of these contracts. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilwoman Harrison.
Yeah, just wanted to thank you for all the work. Yeah, I think maybe even an executive summary or a two-pager that gives us just the like nuts and bolts of the gaps and those, you know, quick solutions that we can work on, something like that would be super helpful. I think this is so important of an issue, and again, appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Just want to echo, thank you so much. I appreciate all of the work that you do. I'm wondering on the city level, how we can include youth? And if we're looking, this is not something we're going to solve tomorrow, it's not something we're going to solve in three years, and how are we showing? I know that Councilor Branch and I were at Enlow High School, we were with the transit, talking about transit and getting them activated to teach them, hey, this is something that we need. So maybe if the city can help activate those potential future business owners who don't even know that that's a, that that's possible, I want to incentivize, or I guess make them, encourage them to join the city. And if we can look to that, we can begin to broaden that base to pull from in three to five years, in 10 years, and we'll have more people who are active. Because I know that when we've talked about it, especially specifically with construction projects, it's that we don't have a lot of people, a lot of MWBEs, a lot of minority business applying for it, so we're not able to pick from a vast pool. So I want to help build that pool, and that would be where I would like to start. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really great. And lastly, I would like to take just a personal point of privilege to acknowledge two people that for today will be their last meeting with this body. I will start with Larry Jarvis. Larry was the first person I hired when I came onboard in 2014 as an ACM, but I'd known Larry 10, 12 years prior to that, so I've worked with Larry in community for well over 20 years. And prior to Larry, we did not have a consolidated intentional method of looking at affordability in this city. I was sad to see that in coming to the capital city, that we were no further along than I was in my rural community that I came from when I came to the City of Raleigh. Since Raleigh, since Larry came onboard, we were able to create an affordable housing policy, an affordable housing plan, affordable housing goals. None of that was easy. It was all very emotional, sometimes very tough. One of our strictest people is out in the audience today, Ms. Rainey. And I don't care what she say, Ms. Rainey, you will have to admit, Larry and I were out at Tarborough Road one Saturday at a community function that I drug Larry to because Octavia wanted us there. It was 102 degrees. We were dancing, and I dance a lot. Larry, not so much. Larry was out there strutting around like a chicken with his head cut off. But he did it all in the name of community, and I will never forget the looks on the faces of the people in Southeast Raleigh when they saw Larry over there at Tarborough Road that Saturday. For me, it was something I already knew, but for others, it was an introduction to a man who didn't look like the traditional community development administrator or professional. I've seen Larry take this stuff home with him for years, be emotional about it, cursed about it because he cares. It's never easy, it's a heavy lift, and while we will never be able to erase some of the housing challenges that we have in this community, in this state, and even in this country, I think this city is better positioned because Larry Jarvis sat at the helm. And some may disagree, but I feel wholly in my heart that we are a better organization, we are a better community because he made us better. He challenged us to think outside of the box. So, Latex is something that's second nature to us. We pushed him, but he also pushed us. And as a result, there are a lot of people in this community who have houses as a result of Larry Jarvis. So, enjoy your retirement, Larry. It's been my honor to work with you.
So, Octavia owes me a hug before I get out of here today. I'm holding it back. I mean, I'm the person she loves and hates the most, and she's going to miss me probably more than anyone else. So, so again, it has been a great run. I've appreciated it. I'm not going anywhere. I will, Raleigh's still my home, so just thank you for this great experience, this great opportunity.
Larry, I just want to say thank you. I love your sense of humor. Sometimes some people don't get it, but...
It's their loss.
It has kept me entertained over many years, but also your heart. And I'll never forget the time you came up to the table, I mean, came up to the speaker and said, gave us some choices of things we could do. And I said, so, do you want some feedback? And you said, yeah, that's why I'm here. I said, I would like us to move forward on a one-cent dedicated property tax. And that has been a game changer, enabling us to do things that we wouldn't have had the money to do otherwise. It's given us more flexibility. But the work you've done with the historic bond, I mean, we used to pass $24 million housing bonds before, not very frequently. $80 million was the most we've ever done. You brought together a committee and leadership team who enabled us to do that. And I'll also never forget that more than 1,000 people who showed up for our housing open house. That was remarkable, and you've done, you've done great, and I really want to say I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And lastly, to my colleague that I get to see from across the table, Robin, thank you for being fierce when that was not what was to be expected from a female sitting in that seat and in that role. Thank you for challenging us to be better as an organization, and thank you for helping us stay on our toes in the way of land use, because quite frankly, there aren't many people in this state that can top you when it comes to land use. Not only do you know it, you wrote the rules. So it's always good to have you on our side. So as this is your last meeting today, I did not script this, I didn't plan this, but I would be remiss if I did not say thank you, dear friend, for helping us, helping me, and helping this organization continue to move forward in our work.
I still can't believe it's your last meeting, but I'm not sure I've fully comprehended that yet. But, Robin, you will be missed, and we thank you for all you have done. So thank you.
I promise no more goodbyes, no more tears. We're going to do some public hearings now.
What a transition. Larry, thank you. And city attorney, thank you. You've been great to work with, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Every moment has been my pleasure. So I hope I see a lot of you, even though I'm going to be gone, I'll only be down the street.
That's good to know. All right, so now we move to public hearings. What a transition. Our first is the annexation X2722. And let me see here, no one has signed up in support, no one has signed up in opposition.
That is correct. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Before I begin with these annexations, I just want to let you know that all the annexations that I'm going to be, that I'm going to be presenting today are all in the ETJ. And also just to point out that several do fall under the category of just outside standard fire response times. And I just want to make note that these situations aren't new, councils acted on them in the past, and I will make note of them when applicable. So, the first annexation we have today, 550 Rock Quarry Road, that is inside the ETJ, as I mentioned before. It is contiguous to corporate limits, the site's about 3.16 acres, it's owned R10. The landowner is looking to construct a church on that property, and they'd like to hook up the water and sewer, the reason why they're asking to annex today. The surrounding uses are residential, particularly to the west and to the south, and to the north you've got commercial and some scattered residential. There's water and sewer adjacent in Rock Quarry Road. If it is annexed today, it will be brought into the boundaries of Council District C, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have today.
Okay, do we have any questions? Okay, I'm going to then open the hearing and close the hearing.
Mayor and council, I had the pleasure of being at this church groundbreaking almost two, three years ago so that they could start and part of their move, and with that, I move for approval of their annexation.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have annexation 3422.
Thank you. Yes, that's the second annexation today. On this site, there's a proposal for a congregate care facility of 56 dwelling units. The parcel is contiguous inside the ETJ. As you can see, it's contiguous to city limits. There's a parcel to the south, which may not be the easiest to see, but that is actually part of this property. One portion of the property is within city limits, the other portion is not. There's a pending site plan on this property. It's about 1.63 acres, it's owned R10. So water and sewer are available on Buck Jones Road, so if it were annexed today, that infrastructure would be extended into the back part of the site. Here to answer any questions that you might have on this, and if it were annexed today, it would be brought into the boundaries of parcel, or I'm sorry, of Council District D.
Okay, we have one person who's signed up in opposition, Carr Sanders. So, any questions for the staff? Okay, I'm going to open the hearing.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. The reason why I, this came up as something to look at is because I attended the small-scale home builders workshop that was presented by the City of Raleigh, by y'all. And so there was a panel discussion, and there is a realtor contractor and real estate developer by the name of Tiffany Elder who was on the panel. And one of the things that she said really stood out to me, and she said that one of the things that she's been able to do is with all the developments that have been going on, she's been able to partner with the developers because a lot of times they're out of touch with what an area needs. And so I was like, okay, this is interesting because there is a house that is actually, it's, you can see it, you can see the property is right next to this little diagram, it's to the, to the right of it. It's 214 Buck Jones Road, and it's, there's a house on it. And it is, it is empty, and the property is overgrown, and then it, that property is also, there's another property on the other side that has about eight townhouses that's owned by a couple. And so what I thought was, well, instead of it being annexed and, and, you know, now it gets to be part of the city limits, because there's so much going on with a need for housing, how about we work with the developer to produce a homestead for the homeless? That's something that's been sitting on my spirit because it is something that can be done in the city, but it can be without tapping into the city resources. You can, homesteads are generally self-sufficient, they don't rely on traditional water, sewer, electric, they use solar power, you know, there's several water catchment, rain catchment system alternatives. And the other thing that came to mind is, I actually just was speaking with an elder in our community, and she lives in a, you know, an active living facility for, you know, our seniors, and she just talked about how boring it was, you know? She had lost use of her car and didn't even realize that the bus was free after three years, you know, of it being so. And so there's, I think, we keep, continue to silo our elderly when if they're actually a part of the community, so many people could benefit from them. I know me and my son, despite our housing situation, we have had an elder in the community literally every week for about the last three years hold a storytime virtually with my son. And that is such a gift to her, and it's a gift to us. She actually went through a bout with cancer, and when she couldn't make it...
She made sure her husband was there. And she is like family for us here, because my son doesn't even have that kind of connection with my parents, his birth grandparents, and he doesn't have that connection with his dad's parents, his birth grandparents. And so I can just see how our seniors could learn to live so much more vivaciously, being able to get outside. When I talked about earlier about how important it is to get outside, people deserve to be able to step outside their front door and plant their feet in the ground. And our elders cannot go, you know, a lot of them can't go different places, but what about if we had gardens? And they had their own little plot of garden right there. We have a community garden. I found out about Camden Street Learning Garden through our storytime with Nancy. She introduced me to her group of ladies that she does, you know, her gardening with and stuff like that, and it has been such an amazing thing. And so I would just suggest that this, this property could be used differently. There are, besides the property next door to it, the 214 Buck Jones, I feel like these two properties could be homesteads for the homeless. Plus, it's right on a bus line. The bus line runs through the Go Carry system, it goes right down to Harris Teeter, and there's a, there's a Harris Teeter and a Dollar Tree in that little plaza, and the bus goes right into the plaza. So it's available, you know, they, while you can still have all the amenities of a homestead, you could also have the amenities of city living, you know? There's no direct service. Well, there you can also pick up the 11L, which runs through NC State, or by NC State Campus, down Avent Ferry and those areas. So there is a lot of ability for, for public transportation for those who are our elders as well as those who are unhoused. And so it's just an option, the other, there are other options, but this is something that I've been looking at and really has been sitting on my heart. And there's a little bit more to it and expanding upon using the tiny home concept to do it because that's how it came, and also how these communities can be ever evolving because you can have people there that are just there for short term, but our elders could be there for the long term as the state, as the stable unit in that community, as people get the healing that they need and are able to move forward into better lives and resolve the traumas and, and learn to move forward and become productive members of society again. So that's, those were just my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for pronouncing my name right, mayor.
Well, I made a note, like you told me to. Any questions? Councilmember Harrison.
Yeah, just to respond to Cara, thank you for your suggestions here. I do want to note that the proposed use is congregate care, and my understanding is that's something like a residential childcare community, for example, for foster children? Or could it be something else?
For the elderly.
For the elderly, okay.
For the elderly, elderly with medical facilities.
I understand. Okay, thank you. So, I do think there is certainly a social service element to this particular facility. Also, this is just an annexation, so they're not asking for a rezoning, and we can't necessarily tell them what kind of use they can do on their property, as long as it's within the guidelines of their zoning. So, I do want to motion this forward. This is around, surrounded by city property and within the ETJ. So, that's my motion.
Okay, first, I have to close the hearing. Okay, you've made the motion. Second.
I just wanted to comment too. Yeah, similarly to Councilmember Harrison, I wanted to thank you for your comments. It's clear that your care and compassion for those around you is evident. And many of the ideas you suggested are so creative and, I think, are really worth pursuing. So, thank you for taking the time. One piece of, that I like, as I have learned, so I want to share to you, is that like, an annexation is really important, because it allows them access to water and sewer, as opposed to septic. So, if we have a lot of people living together, I want to make sure they can access water and sewer, just as a matter of like life safety and sanitation. And then ultimately, we'll like add to our tax base, which we can use to further fund like the pro-social programs that are heavy on both of our hearts. So, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Are you raising your hand, Councilmember Black, or not?
Kind of. I, kind of, it was like a half, I feel the sentiments of both Councilmember Harrison and Patton. You always have such interesting comments and content that you bring that are so trauma-informed and informed by the community, because you are a person that is like in the direct frontlines of what's happening. I would like to talk to you soon, so I'm just gonna put that out there, and I appreciate you. But yeah, petition annexations and like rezonings, like we're just like kind of bringing them into like the city to give them services, so. Does anybody have a motion?
It's already, the motion has been made and seconded by Councilmember Ford. So, all in favor? Aye. Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and I want to say, the little guy next to you has been an angel. Good work. Next, we have AX 4122. No one has signed up in opposition or support.
Okay, thank you. So, this is also contiguous to city limits inside the ETJ, as you can see on the map, on the screen, on the presentation. So, it's 13.29 acres. It's owned industrial mixed-use, three conditional use. The owner of the property is proposing warehouse office space, about 114,000 square feet. The surrounding uses are heavy industrial. You've got public, you've got public water and sewer that are adjacent to the site, or immediately adjacent to the site. Actually, the sewer goes directly through the site. This is one of those lots that's outside the standard fire response times. If it were annexed into the city today, it would be brought into the boundaries of Council District C, and more than happy to answer any questions if you have them. And I will also mention that there is a current site plan on this property that's under review, so.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I'm gonna open the hearing and close the hearing. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I know Pepsi's right across the street from this, and they've been there for almost, I think, 10 years, close to it now. So, I move for approval of annexation.
Do we have a second? Okay. We had dueling seconds, so Councilmember Harrison or Patton? Okay, all in favor? Aye. That was unanimous, clerk.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have AX 0423.
Thank you.
No one has signed up in opposition. We do have applicant here in support.
Thank you. Sorry, jumping again, as always.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so, this particular annexation, it's adjacent to, just want to make note that it's adjacent to, but not associated with, a recent annexation that took place at the last council meeting, which is the public site, that was annexed into the city, but with a delayed effective date. So, in mentioning that, while its geographic location and its timing on this particular agenda is coincidental, the property owners on this parcel are actually coordinating with the developers of the public site, because the public site is installing infrastructure. This particular lot is adjacent to city water, which is to the north of the site in Buffalo Road. As the public site develops, it'll bring sewer onto that property. The current zoning of this property is OX three conditional use and it's commercial mixed-use three conditional use. The owner of the property is proposing multifamily apartment complex of 412 units. The site is also outside the standard fires, fire service response time. I do also want to make note that since this is in the city limits, there is not a rezone associated with it. The parcel, which has a site plan that's currently under review, does adhere to the city's policies and the city UDO, and anything that UDO requires is required to the site. So, anything from street trees, stormwater, roadways, all the city regulation. So, with that, just to make sure there's nothing else I need to mention here, I think that about covers it. If you have any questions, I will be more than happy to answer them. One last note is Nacina Kyra Overly District, because it is very close to the Belt Line. So, one last thing, also, sorry, I forgot to mention, is that right now, it's contiguous, or I'm sorry, it's within the ETJ. It is not technically contiguous to city limits. But once that property, the public's property, just to the east comes into the city, it will then be contiguous with city limits. So, you've got an approved annexation with a delayed effective date directly to the east of this property. And with that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So, that would be brought into District B if it were annexed today.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna open the hearing. Let's see, Beth here. I don't know if you have a presentation, or if you're just here for any questions.
I will be super brief. Mayor and councilmembers, Beth Trejo, Nelson Mullins, 301 Hillsborough Street. I'm here today on behalf of Gray Star, who will be the developer of this property. And I've got with me Will Barrett and Zach Spencer, I believe, who've signed up, but who do not need to speak unless you have questions for them. Just to ask you to please annex this property, either immediately or with a delayed effective date, so long as we have immediate availability to utilities, we can move forward. And wanted just to briefly point out to you that this is a collaboration between developers in this area. This multifamily project, the shopping center, single-family homes that are also adjacent, that includes a number of public improvements, a multi-use path along Buffalo Road, a traffic light at Buffalo Road and Timberfield, which is a new street that will separate the public shopping center and the multifamily, as well as improvements to adjacent Needham Road, and lots of walkability, you know, internal to these mixed-use areas. I won't repeat anything that Christopher already said, but we would ask for your support, and thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
Yeah. Hi. Are you able to use the little highlighter to kind of show where road widening and some of those infrastructure improvements that will come as a natural part of the UDO will be roughly?
So, you are stretching my Luddite abilities, but along the frontage on this site, there will be widening on Buffalo here. There's a greenway planned here, and so there will be some interior connections. There'll be a street here, and a roughly there, and a traffic light roughly there. And I think those are the, well, there'll be some improvements to Needham, including the cul-de-sac, which is there roughly. You can see why I'm a lawyer. Does that answer your question?
No, that's all right. That's great. That's great. And I, you know, I've gotten a little bit of constituent email traffic around a lot of the development in this area. Can you confirm all those things will be provided at y'all's expense?
So, our site plan shows all of the improvements that will be done as a part of our project. So, yes, we will be paying for those things as a part of the city review.
Excellent. Thank you. I did have one more question for staff. Do we have transportation staff here?
Jason Myers, Raleigh Transportation.
Yes, hi. I was at a neighborhood meeting for the little sliver of property that's gonna go through rezoning on this site, too. There's like all, in all four corners of this, around Forestville and Buffalo, there's some big development happening there. And I just wanted to make sure that there are crosswalks between, I know that each one of these developers will have some road improvements that they're responsible for as part of the UDO, but I just got concerned that at the intersection between Forestville and Buffalo, that pedestrian connectivity and crosswalk would like sort of fall into a no-man's land of sorts.
We can probably get back with a very specific and very certain answer of what's in those plans that are in review or approved. In general, if there's a sidewalk on both sides, and that's being installed by a developer as a part of their furniture improvements, we're gonna get the crossing to connect to the other side as a part of those improvements, especially if there's other changes of those traffic signals in the works. And I believe those are happening here, because the road is getting wider, and it's basically gonna be pretty much all-new infrastructure. But if we need 100% certain about a specific leg, we'll have to get back to you.
Okay. I'm good. Anyone else have questions?
May I per tem?
Yeah, just real quick, staff question. I know we said this was non-contiguous, but we rezoned across the street, Buffalo, back in 2020, some properties that's in the city limits, so.
On the north side, or?
Yeah. Because that was the kickoff of all of these street improvements and requirements that were needed. Yeah, the RS 30, yep, right.
I will say, as long as it's within the ETJ, it is possible to rezone without annexation. Normally, the driver of that annexation is gonna be when that site wants to connect to water and sewer, and then they would come forward and petition for annexation into the city.
Right, but you're saying that part's not in the city limits?
Not. That is, my understanding of that, that's not in the city limits, and we checked that. If you see here, it's not showing up on iMaps. It's within the city limits at this time. So.
Most of what's east of 540 here is not in the city limits. It's in the ETJ. You have to get, really on the other side of Forestville Road, you see this area that's platted pretty extensively. That is in city limits, but most of what's out here is not. The ETJ is, yeah, but so we have city zoning throughout the ETJ.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing then. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna move to approve, there's no fancy language on these, right? Move to approve with a delayed effective date of June 30th, 2024, with permission to hook up to water and sewer immediately.
Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next is AX 0623.
All right, thank you. Hesitated a little bit, because I have a history. So, so this is AX 623. This is located at 3081 Sanderford Road. So, the current zoning of this is commercial mixed-use three. The site is almost seven acres. The property owner is proposing a self-storage facility of about 123,000 square feet. There is a site plan that's associated with this that's currently under review. The surrounding uses are mixed, for the most part, residential, commercial, and some religious institutional, so some churches in there. There is water and sewer directly available in Sanderford Road, which you see bordering the site on the south side. And if you, if brought, if annexed today, it would be brought into the boundaries of Council District D, and if you have any questions, more than happy to answer them, so.
C, C. It would be C.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my bad. I wrote that down incorrectly. Thank you for the correction.
No problem.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, no one has signed up in support or in opposition, so I'm gonna open the hearing and close the hearing. Do we have a motion?
I wish this wasn't CX three, but it is. I move for approval of annexation.
Okay. Second, seconded by Councilmember Patton, all in favor? Aye. Okay, that was unanimous, clerk.
Thank you very much.
All right, next is rezoning Z 4122, Old Mill Burney Road. No one has signed up in support or opposition.
Good afternoon. Hannah Reca, Planning and Development. So, this rezoning request, the hearing is open. It had been deferred from a previous meeting to allow the applicant to make changes to the zoning conditions in response to fire service status. No changes have been made to the case as of yet, but I do believe the applicant intends to make those changes and would be interested in another deferral to the May 16th meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion at that effect?
I move to hold the public hearing open until May 16th.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, that was unanimous. Okay, next is annexation AX 2222. This was held open from March, and we have, no one signed up in opposition. Laura Good is here on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, ma'am, and you'll remember that AX 2222 and Z 6922 are for the same parcel. So, the rezoning requests and the annexation requests are both for about 44 acres. The rezoning would go from R 30 Wake County zoning to R 6 conditional city zoning. This is on the west side of Auburn Nightdale Road, across the street from the city-county-owned Randley tract. So, it's considered contiguous with satellite corporate limits, and actually is eligible for annexation only through a resolution adopted by council, what, last year? The rezoning request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, but within the southeast special study area in that, in an area authorized for ETJ expansion by the council during your last meeting, Planning Commission does recommend approval. And I just want to remind you, so it's just on the west side of Auburn Nightdale and a little bit west of the Plan 540 extension, a couple of views of the site. And just reminding you, the conditions out here, so there's a limit on the total number of residential units, some limits on placement of a principal building in relationship to the northern property line, and that's illustrated here. And then also, a promise of open space, 60% of which would be contiguous. And then, they're going above and beyond with their stormwater control measures here as well. Happy to answer questions for you before you hear from the applicant. I would note, you have two separate hearing, public hearings happening, one for each of these items. You want to take action on each of them. You need to make the, if you are inclined to rezone, you need to take action on the annexation first. Questions I can answer for you before you hear from the applicant.
Any questions? Okay, well, the hearing is open, so the applicant would come up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Laura Good with Parker Poe, 301 Fayetteville Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. As Bynum mentioned, this did come before you at your March 21st meeting, and it was held open simply to have the action taken on the southeast special study area, because this property is within step one of the southeast special study area. And those recommendations were approved at your April 4th meeting. And so, just to kind of go over the commitments that we've added here, importantly, this case adds conditions for the buffering to the north, northern property line, which is the closest single-family residence to the property. Additionally, the commitment to preserve 20% open space, 60% of which will be contiguous. That is to meet the compact development standards under the UDO, which was a key policy of CESA for preservation of open space. Additionally, the commitment to green stormwater infrastructure. So, overall, this request is forward-looking to the nearby I-540 extension to provide additional housing for that, and to provide the type of development that's recommended by the recently adopted CESA plan for this location, based on several years of input from the community. A compact development pattern that preserves significant open space... A compact development pattern that preserves significant open space and protects environmentally significant features on the property while implementing green stormwater infrastructure, and the annexation is anticipated to be net positive. We respectfully request that you approve these cases, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Well, I'm going to close the hearing then. Do we have a motion?
I move for approval of annexation AX 2222.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Councilmember Black has opposed. And then the second?
So I want to thank the applicant for their work on conservation and working keeping that 60% contiguous. We all know there's a lot of growth that's happening, but at the same time, they have worked to try to do, I think, responsible growth in this area. Not just putting up, you know, 400 units, which you actually could have done in this area and bringing your unit count down. So with that said, and the work you've done, I know counselors had questions about affordability. At this time, there is no transit in this area. So we couldn't actually do a tax credit because you wouldn't score for it. But at the same time, this area is naturally, right now, affordable based upon some of the growth patterns. So with all of that said, I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated April 18th, 2023, contained in agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adoption effective dates described in the agenda items under recommended action.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? You're opposed? Okay, so Councilmember Black opposed, remainder in support. Okay. Thank you. Next, we have rezoning Z 7522, 3717 Edwards Mill Road.
Yes, ma'am, this public hearing has been open since early February. This is a request to rezone from R 4 to R 6 with conditions. This is on the northwest side of Edwards Mill Road, just south of Carriage Drive. Planning Commission recommended approval, and it was converted to a general conditional use case after that. So the conditions are a number here that are not, have not changed since you last saw this, that are still being offered, that buffer in particular. They have added two new conditions since we last discussed this. They've provided for an easement for a traffic signal if the city wants it at the time of site plan. And then they have made a provision for a contribution to construction of pedestrian infrastructure in the event that the, for access to Laurel Hills Park, sorry. And I'm going to say, you may have questions about these two very transportation-focused conditions, and I will be so very happy to refer you to my colleague Jason Myers. Questions you have for me before you open the hearing from the applicant?
Any questions? Okay. I think Worth Mills is here.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners here on behalf of the applicant. We appreciate your patience as we've continued to work on these conditions, both with planning and the transportation departments. I did want to mention about the Transit and Transportation Committee meeting last March. Part of the Vision Zero program is that these traffic solutions are equitable, proportionate, and data-driven. And we think that the inclusion of the $10,000 contribution to the construction of a signal plus the allowance for a 25-square-foot easement for the city of Raleigh to locate that traffic signal infrastructure are both data-driven, equitable, and proportionate to the request that we have made for nine additional units. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, all policies that have been identified by staff. And because of those reasons, we think that this request is reasonable and in the public interest, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions? The applicant? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing then. Do we have a motion?
I want to just take a moment to say thank you for all the work that both the applicant and the residents in the area have done. There are many meetings. There's a lot of back and forth, and we sent it to Transit Committee as we discussed and learned a lot. At the end of the day, it did not, it was not enough for me and the residents to get to an approval because there's a lot of residents out there that were against the, this case, and I'm going to have to move to deny. I am going to move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated April 18th, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to deny the zoning amendment.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion fails due to lack of a second. Councilmember Melton?
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate all the work Councilmember Jones has done on this case with the applicant. And I know sometimes you've got to stand with your community. For me, knowing what they could build here by right anyway, without these sort of extra contributions and protections for pedestrian safety, I don't think it's a perfect case, but I don't want to lose the contribution for the pedestrian infrastructure as well as some of the other, I think, considerate concessions they've made as far as setbacks and things like that. So I will make a motion to approve. I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated April 18th, 2023, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment with the adoption and effective dates described in the agenda item under recommended action.
Do we have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone who's opposed? Councilmember Jones and Black. Thank you. Next, we have rezoning Z 8722. This was held open from April 4th as well. No one has signed up in support, no one has signed up in opposition.
Hello again, Sarah Shaughnessy, Raleigh Planning and Development. So this is a rezoning request for four properties on the block just north of the Convention Center. The request is to rezone from downtown mixed-use 20 stories with shop front frontage to downtown mixed-use 40 stories with shop front and conditions. You opened the public hearing for this case at your last meeting. Since that time, the applicant has offered a new condition requiring a contribution of $100,000 to the city's Affordable Housing Fund in addition to the three previous conditions, bike share station and a public art installation. And then just a refresher, here's an aerial view of the site. So again, it's four properties just north of the Convention Center in the heart of downtown, very close to transit. And then some aerial views of the site showing the existing use as a surface parking lot and some structured parking. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the applicant did not sign up to speak, but they are here should you have questions specific for them.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yeah, just a few questions. So this case would take us from 20 to 40 stories downtown, which I do believe it's consistent with our, you know, vision for the urban form in this area, so I appreciate that. It would take us from 400 to 886 units residential, at least that's the possible potential. So 400 to 886, so a doubling or so. So definitely an additional amount of housing potential here. And then I did see there's a condition now for a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund, and that's for $100,000, which I know I think is a great opportunity for us. I just want to check numbers while we still have Mr. Jarvis here with us. $100,000, that typically is going to allow us to build perhaps two and a half units at 60% AMI over 30 years in terms of our contribution from the city. Do I have that right? Okay, so two and a half units. And again, this is a change in entitlement from 400 to 886 units. So we could build two and a half out of this additional 446 units or so. That's about a half a percent from my calculations. And so I was just doing some looking around, and I think this is just goes kind of beyond perhaps this case at our qualified census tracts. So when I was looking at the map there, that's generally where our li-tech developments occur, right? So if we are using monies for affordable housing, you know, with our own funds, it's likely going to go towards li-tech from our last discussions on this. And so where does li-tech occur in the city? You know, this is something I've been trying to wrap my head around. And when I look at the map for Raleigh, we have 22 qualified census tracts. There are, I believe, 10 of those in District D. There are nine of those in District C, two are in District B, one is in District A. So there's a lot in D and C, and then nowhere else, really, in the city that we are able to make these investments. So, you know, I'm thinking about where does this money go eventually, you know? Does it go downtown? Will we be able to put affordable housing downtown? If I look at the li-tech, again, qualified census tracts, it appears as though downtown is not part of that. So when I look at the maps, what I'm seeing there is that you have to have 50% of your households with incomes below 60% of the AMI. So if downtown doesn't have that, then we're not going to see affordable housing units end up in downtown with this project. So I just want to clarify, the affordable housing contribution will help us, but it will not bring affordable housing units downtown near this site necessarily. And I say this, you know, I am, I live in one of those census tracts, 532.07, that does attract li-tech developments. It's one of the reasons I think that I could afford my house because when you have a mix of incomes in the area that allows, there are spillover effects to that. So with downtown, if all we are developing are higher-end market rate units, that also increases values next door. So I say all that, I know it's not exactly a question, but I want us to understand fully what we're looking at here, what the opportunity is with this. And I think it just requires a little bit more discussion perhaps among council with housing and neighborhoods to again, think about how do we equitably, you know, move affordable housing around the city? Because right now our tools are very limited. I think that's all I have to say for now. Maybe my question is who gets to live downtown?
Yeah, and I would defer to my colleagues in housing and neighborhoods if there's a specific question that you'd like to ask.
Well, again, I'm not sure there's a specific question, but again, the qualified census tracts, that gives you a boost on the tax credits, that makes them feasible, which then reduces the amount of subsidy per unit. But again, most tax credit projects that the city has invested in to date have been, again, stick-built garden-style projects with surface parking. So again, going in the downtown moves you into a different level of building. And the baby step that we are taking, or that we have taken, is with the tentative selection of an affordable housing developer across a more square on the property that we own there, which would involve structured parking and potentially a different development type. So that's kind of, again, I'll refer to it again, as a baby step moving in that direction so that we are doing something downtown outside of that conventional model.
Councilmember Melton?
Something I just want to add to the discussion, and I thought that was just, that was great. You've done so much research on that. It's always obviously easier to control land that we own. And so I think we've done a really good job recently of figuring out how to move city-owned land into construction for affordable housing. When I look at this site, though, it's privately owned, so, you know, we don't really get to tell them what they build, but it's all surface parking. It's surface parking and a parking garage, which is like the worst form of land use, especially downtown. I also think of when you look at like a heat map of our tax-based revenue. You know, downtown, all the big buildings there are really subsidized most of the rest of the city. And so if this land stays as surface parking or structured parking, we have a real missed opportunity, I think, from just a urban activation pedestrian experience, but then also our ability to, quite frankly, make money off of this property and the taxes they will pay that we can use to go towards all these things that we know we need. And so I would like to have something done here because this, I don't, it can't stay like this. And that this is a blight, no offense to the folks who own it, and I think a missed opportunity for us to, you know, as a city, we don't, our only funding source is property taxes and bonds, really. And so we've got a missed opportunity here for property taxes, and if they can get their entitlement up and replace the surface parking with any active use, we'll get more tax revenue on it.
I was just going to add to that, too. One of the things we have talked about a lot with the Downtown Raleigh Alliance is the need for more people living downtown. A lot of, especially in that area, Fayetteville Street is suffering. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that we have overly relied on the business and corporate community to kind of vitalize our downtown. And so there really has been heavy emphasis on more people living downtown. And that, we just had a meeting the other day, and that message was sent over and over that that is key to our downtown's future. So I'm with Counselor Melton in that this is privately owned. When we own the property, we have a say. And I think that sitting there looking at parking lots, I mean, it makes me crazy. And if we can get this on our tax rate, we can help improve the downtown in more ways than one, and that is bringing people back here. So what do we want to do?
I'd like to hold this for two more weeks, just to kind of think through the community benefits on this case. So can I make that motion?
Yes.
I'm going to motion to hold. I guess it would be until May 2nd for the afternoon.
The afternoon. We're piling on May 2nd in the afternoon, everybody, just to make you aware.
I don't, why don't you want to do May 16th?
Is the applicant here?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we set this, I'd like to hear from the applicant regarding moving or extending the hearing.
That's, that's fine. I think the 16th would be fine as well.
Okay, if that's all right with you, I will motion for May 16th.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you. All right, next is text change 123. This is stormwater management regulations.
Good afternoon, Ben Brown, Engineering Service Department. I'm sorry, I'm not Justin, but he wanted to call me in to fill in for him on this one for stormwater reasons. Thank you. Just a background, kind of about our stormwater quality regulations. They are mostly mandated by, by the state of North Carolina through the New River Basin rules. And the main nutrient target for our basin is nitrogen, which is found in all, all of our rainfall. And the more hard surfaces you have on a site, decreases the chance for infiltration and increases the amount of nitrogen that could run off into your streams. So our regulations are based on treating that runoff before it gets the stream and getting it to an acceptable level. And the acceptable level the state sets for that is 3.6 pounds per acre per year. That is a basin-wide standard, not to get into what the math of that is, but just, just so you know. And sites are treating usually with a combination of stormwater devices and buying off-site treatment credits to reach that acceptable level. So these are dictated by the state, like I said, and their last update to their model ordinance was 1999 when they first enacted these rules. So this is occurring through an update of their newest model ordinance. And it requires the city to update their, their U D O as well with the stormwater policies for this water quality. And it also requires the city to update its reporting capabilities to the state for its development activity. So what are the changes? Adding some definitions that are specific. So what are the changes? Adding some definitions that are specific to this section, there are mostly, in our UDO, we have a definitions chapter, but we're actually adding a few definitions that are just for this chapter, so that's a little bit different. Creating the built-upon-area term to replace the impervious-area term. This is something that the state is really big on in replacing that term, even though we have finally got most of our citizens to understand what impervious area means. Hopefully, we'll transition quickly to built-upon area. Adopting the state language for common plan of development, that would come into play for plans that were approved prior to our initial stormwater ordinance in 2001. So it changes some of our exemption language as far as that goes. And also, there is an exemption for single-family lots greater than one acre with less than 5% of built-upon area, which we don't have a lot of one-acre residential lots in Raleigh, but there are a few. So it would be affected by that. And added a needed exemption for agriculture to comply with state statutes. Now, the big changes, those were kind of my preamble, and the big changes were to the nutrient treatment and how it's looked at. So all sites with more than 24% built-upon area must now utilize a primary stormwater control measure before being able to purchase those off-site mitigation credits to reach their 3.6 pounds per acre per year goal. And sites with less than 24% built-upon area may go directly to the off-site buy-down fee there to meet that target loading rate. And so that basically means currently, we have pretty much cutoffs for residential and for commercial building that you can reach a certain level before you can buy down. And it's conceivable that you could get to that level without using a stormwater control measure. Now, if your site that's proposing more than 24% built-upon area, then you would have to install some sort of primary control measure before the off-site option is even available to you. The other big change from the engineering side is the state is switching from more of a ratio to a state-approved loading tool, which they've used in our water supply watersheds previously, but now it's kind of expanding that to the entire New River Basin. It's called the SNAP tool. If anyone wants to Google it and mess around with it. Impacts on city projects, for linear public projects like roadways and sidewalks, they may now utilize the off-site mitigation credit buy-down regardless of the nutrient loading rate. And this was a big hang-up on a lot of our roadway and sidewalk projects, because a lot of times, these projects don't have room for SCM treatment and that sort of thing. So we can, so it gives us the freedom to kind of use mitigation banks for those roads or even use other city sites to kind of make up for that mitigation. For nonlinear projects, like any city buildings and things like that, they still have to comply with the rules, as is today. So for linear projects, this is similar to NC, NC Department of Transportation complies for their linear projects. So it pretty much evens the playing field for those type of projects. Outreach activities, since the text change process has started, we have a city website there. Sorry, it's a little hard to read, but it's tracking all the changes and all the processes and kind of where we are. The state did have a free one-hour training session for their new loading tool back in March, and they're having a paid-for training at the end of this month to get designers and up to speed on their new loading tool. The city is actually hosting a webinar this Thursday to go over kind of some of the SNAP tool stuff, but mostly our now submittal guidelines that we'll be looking for in the morning on April 20. And we already have around about 100 people signed up for that. So we're getting ready for that. And also, we've sent out targeted emails to designers, developers, and owners, and also had a couple one-on-one meetings, as asked for. And then we've got, per our website, the new guidelines based on these activities. That's pretty much it. This is, the state date for this going to effect is May 1. So, and we aren't really changing anything beyond what the state has kind of dictated us to change. And the planning commission did approve this eight to zero at their meeting.
Mayor Proten?
Thank you for the presentation. How does, first of all, what's about the average cost of stormwater treatment? And the reason I'm asking is because how does this impact the affordability when we're talking about our, doing tiny homes or cottage courts? Because the goal's for them to be affordable, but, you know, if they have to do stormwater at big costs, how, what's the impact of this policy?
So for tiny homes, they're looking at probably falling under that 24% kind of breakdown. And for cottage courts, they seem to be more intense as far as built-upon area goes or impervious area goes. So I don't really see them changing really the way they do business for like the cottage courts, because there was very few cottage courts that were able to just do a mitigation fee and be compliant today. But for like a tiny home, which is probably less than 24% of your built-upon area on like a lot, then at that point, you're, you're just doing that mitigation fee. Now, I will say, for lots that were created that are less than an acre and lots that were created prior to 2001, they still have those impervious maximums that we passed in 2016. So they can build up to those maximums before they get caught into these regulations as well.
Okay. Well, the reason I'm asking is I know we have a particular project overall out of while, and the stormwater costs have greatly impacted that project. And that's why I'm trying to understand, like, what, what's the new cost ramifications of these new policies? Not that I hate them, but what's the impact?
No, and from like a project like that, more of the apartment style, in my opinion, we wouldn't really see, see that big of a cost increase, because they were already having to use a, a primary stormwater control measure to comply with their stormwater already. And actually, what we're seeing with sort of the loading tool, because what the loading tool does is break, break down your impervious and your treatment in a lot more granular level. Before, it was like, impervious is this, grass is this, forest is this. Now it's like sidewalk is this, roof is this, and like your treatment level varies. So we've actually seen some more, I'll say, accurate treatment levels and have seen some of those loading rates and size of SCMs could go down in those situations, which would be a lower cost. And I see my planner supervisor out of the corner of my eye.
What I think we're talking about is missing middle housing. It's like, here we have, you know, new rules that allow for missing middle housing, duplexes, triplexes, quads, cottage courts, accessory dwelling units, whatnot. I understand the importance of stormwater, but is that also going to add to the cost of building this type of housing and then making it, like, if you're adding $100,000 to the cost of a house, then you've just put that out of people's reach. So I think that's kind of what we're trying to figure out here, because knowing what's happened at Idlewild, I mean, that's about an $800,000 cost. So when you talk about that, the whole, we're defeating the purpose of trying to build more affordable housing choices, and that's the concern.
These are state rules that we have to adopt and are going to apply regardless of whether we adopt this, though. I just want to make sure everybody knew that.
Yes, I heard that. But we, we sometimes need to understand the implications, so we can communicate that to our legislators.
So, and Sally can correct me if I'm wrong, but from like the missing middle standpoint, they're looking at those lots that are already exempt, using those maximum impervious standards, which are staying the same until you get to one acre. Now, for an apartment complex like the Idlewild, I don't really see their treatment costs going up because of this regulation. Like, their treatment cost was, was kind of what it was under our current regulations, and it's going to be approximately the same under our new regulations. Now, there could be some differences because of the way you're creating that loading tool, but it's really about, from like the state's standpoint, they're looking at kind of that acre cutoff. Once you get above an acre, you're always kind of building something that's over 24% impervious, is going to have to do that primary as SCM, which they were already currently. They were just not, they were just made to get to a certain level and figuring out their math differently on that. So.
Sally, who had also with Raleigh Stormwater, I was just going to add that we have run the calculations comparing the old method and the new method. And the 24% corresponds to the, to essentially a single-family home neighborhood. And so if you're looking at a single-family home neighborhood, they would currently have to provide the same amount of treatment as will be proposed. And for things that are more dense than single-family neighborhoods, again, it's still going to be the same in terms of the onsite treatment required before they can do buy-down credits.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yeah, I just wanted to check. I did receive an email about urban agriculture and community agriculture. Is it exempt for the, from this? I mean, I saw that exemption for agriculture.
So if it's, if it's considered an agriculture activity by the state, then it would be exempted by this. So that's kind of what we're putting into our ordinance, which was not there when we were talking with the urban farms around town. So.
So you have had some conversations with those farms, and they're comfortable with where this is at?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Patton?
Hi. Thanks for the presentation. I saw the link to the stormwater design manual, and I was reminded of a constituent concern that we worked on together. And I was curious, I know that there are updates coming to the design manual in the fall. Is that right?
Correct. We're hoping to get the draft out for comment, spring, fall, and then kind of bring it to you all at the end of the calendar year. So.
Cool. Awesome. So this, like, impacts, does it impact, makes easier or prolongs the, some of the modifications you kind of alluded to in our other conversation?
It's being incorporated, because we knew this was coming for a little bit. We didn't know officially when they were going to pull like the trigger on it and like let it go. I would categorize this as kind of like, this is kind of what the state is making us do. The manual is going to be more of a, we want to do this for stormwater treatment. So we won't have that state kind of mandate hanging over our head for like the design manual stuff.
Mayor Proten?
So it sounds like we, there's still a lot of questions, I think, from council, trying to understand this and just understanding stormwater. But also, it sounds like the state's going to enforce it regardless of what's going to happen. So I would move for approval of this, as well as sending to committee for further understanding, I think, by council.
And is there any, like, case studies you'd like us to compare, old versus new, too?
Yeah, I think old versus new, and, and just, you know, just kind of the cost impact and things of that nature.
Which committee?
I guess, growth and natural resources, I'm on that committee. So.
Well, I'm looking at this, too, from an urban forum standpoint. I'm wondering if it might fit an EDI. You're, you're on that committee?
No, I'm not.
No, you're not. I'm trying to get my hands around how this is going to impact.
From the economic impact?
Yeah.
Take it in EDI, we only have one item pending.
We've done that, we've done that with other items. We've sent it to both committees. I think, I think, I mean, it's, it's going to be approved. So I think we get to understand.
EDI doesn't have, like, they, doesn't have anything but one item, and we're still waiting on a date for that.
I have that from committee report. We can take it. I would think that with our scheduling, that one item is going to be in May, so this would probably be June that we could take this up, given the inner-city visit. My question also is, is can we not just send this to committee and hold it? Do we have to approve it today? Because I, I am also concerned about the effect on affordable housing, housing affordability in some of these like missing middle infill projects. And so I would rather get it right than not.
Well, I think what we've been told is that the state deadline is May 1.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Let's not get in trouble.
That's correct. And.
So.
So I'll say this, because I think there's a lot of economic impact on this, to approve it and send this to the EDI committee for review. And then, you know, bring it back with that, because that's what I'm concerned about, too, is how, how are we going to say we want affordable housing, but yet we keep putting barriers and other fees that get passed along to those that are looking to purchase. So that's my motion.
Councilmember Harrison?
I'm going to second that, but I do also want to say, I think this is an important text change from an environmental standpoint. I think it makes our stormwater management more precise. You know, I have talked to a few different colleagues about it who, you know, think this is a good way to go. I understand the affordability concern. You know, we are behind overall in the city in terms of keeping up with stormwater management, just the cost that it is. I mean, I don't know, hundreds of millions of dollars, close to a billion dollars perhaps, of needed improvements across the cities. So the costs keep going up. When I spoke to the Town of Cary about what they do, they often partner with their larger developers to make sure that they are at that highest level of compliance on stormwater, you know? And so they're bringing their own public monies into that conversation, because it is a big cost. But I think by, you know, having this policy in place, overall, our city is going to be in a more sustainable place moving forward. You know, I did visit a missing middle project, actually, last week, and there was a lot of standing water where they're going to build, you know, 40 apartments that was two small houses. And so it's important to me, you know, that's next to a creek, that we are, you know, having that highest standard, you know, of environmental compliance there. Otherwise, we are putting downstream neighbors at risk.
Let me just clarify. If it's going to be approved, you need a consistency statement. If it's not, then it needs to be. It should be attached, does it not?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, or if you want to read it, Councilmember Branch, I just want to add that I agree with Councilmember Harrison's statements. I think we have some competing interests, obviously, environmental stewardship, and then also housing affordability. And so we get in these pressure points sometimes. And so I think we need to approve this so that we don't get in trouble. And then take it to committee and see if there's a way to accomplish all of our goals, ensuring the affordability in the infill projects while also protecting the environment and folks who may be downstream.
So I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated April 18, 2023, containing the general materials, and to approve the zoning text amendment, as well as seeing the item to EDI committee for further review.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. That was unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the report and recommendation of the Economic Development Innovation Committee.
Well, we have two items pending now. The first item that we've had for a minute is the Economic Development Roundtable with our HBCUs. And we are going to have that discussion at our meeting on May 23 at 1:30 PM in council chambers. And then I anticipate we'll take up this, the stormwater at the meeting in June. That's all.
Okay. Councilmember? Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped to report of mayor and council. Growth in Natural Resources.
We don't have anything to report, but I'm forgetting, I think there might be something on our agenda for the end of May. Can someone remind me? It might have been staff. We are talking about some text.
The omnibus text change program.
Yes, thank you. Hey, Tanzi. I'm like, what, tell me what we're talking about.
Yeah, you do have one item pending, and Tanzi, you were a deputy city manager, you have one item pending in committee, which is the omnibus text change that was referred coming out of the Planning Commission. So this is a number of administrative cleanup items. You will also have a scheduling conflict, and so I believe also that a meeting would not be held until May.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Safe, Vibrant, and Healthy Community Committee, we have no items pending. And Transportation and Transit?
No pending items, no meeting this month.
Same here. Okay. Report from the mayor and council. Council Melton, I'll start with you.
Your report?
Councilmember Patton?
Yeah. Hello. I just wanted to highlight the District B bike rides coming up April 29 and May 13. Councilmember Melton and I are hosting office hours out in District B at Smooth Joe Coffee at 11:00. I also wanted to take a minute. I was, I was not present at the April 4 meeting, but I did hear many public comments around the unhoused encampment that was cleaned up in District B on DOT property near 540. And I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to speak on that topic. It's a sensitive issue, for sure. It's deeply close to my heart. When I got into office, I sort of immediately started researching and, and trying to act on, on the situation that I saw there. We, I made sure that there were, I didn't initiate, but I'm, I'm. I made sure that there were, I didn't initiate, but I made sure that people were like receiving services if they wanted them. And I learned a lot about the barriers for what type of services are missing from our suite of services in this area. So I'm thankful to all the people who keep lifting up this issue and I want them to know that it's important to me too. And that we're going to continue working on it. And I'm excited to kind of hear what the homelessness task force has been up to and what, how we can kind of continue to improve those services in our area.
Councilmember Black?
Peace y'all, nothing, nothing serious. I just want to say a special shout out to the science. I went to a, what am I trying to say? I went to an award ceremony with the science and STEM team that we have here at the city. They do, or not the city, with the, with the state, they do a bunch of different events around the state on working with teachers, students, future graduates that are going to be doing STEM. And I got to come and I was honored as a part of it, it's pretty cool, so shout out to them. And that's pretty much it.
Mayor Percham?
One more thing, I'm sorry. So I've also been getting emails about how some of the traffic calming measures we have are actually making safety concerns more like heightened. And I guess I kind of want to, I don't know if I want to report or just like put it out there that we need to be looking at the ways that what we are doing may be like retroactive to what we're actually trying to do specifically as it relates to traffic calming. A lot of people have been emailing me, like the traffic calming measures that we've put in place are actually making it more dangerous to walk around. And so I guess I just want to see the difference of like what has happened, where we are now, and how we can either rectify or set a different course of direction with some of those things. And that is all for this time.
Mayor Percham?
Just one item, Councilor Harris actually brought it up earlier. And I just want to ask for actually an update from staff on the number of zoning cases we've had probably over the last five years per district. So we can just try to get an understanding of the growth and also the type. Is it mainly, is it residential, is it commercial? So that we can kind of, you know, get a better understanding of where all the pressures are. And it can be in a manager's update sometime in the hopefully not-too-far future. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones?
Yes, I have the next District E community conversation on May 10th. It's going to be at Briar Creek Community Center from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. So please come and come out and have a conversation. And then I just had a question, I know we talked about public comments and I just, my brain just stopped. Did we move those to the second Tuesday at 7:00 or have we made a motion on that? What was, and where does that sit and when do we do that?
We have not made a motion. We asked Taysha to go back and do some more polling of, and getting feedback from residents before we make a decision.
Oh, she's coming back next month to have that due? Yes, well, she's getting up right now, awesome. Can you just confirm Taysha, I would just love it, thank you so much.
Yes, Taysha Hinton, Office of Community Engagement, you all accept it, come back on your May 2nd agenda.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Councilmember Fort?
Oh.
I'm sorry, I just forgot one thing.
Mayor Percham?
I do have a District C meeting for the month of April, it was moved to April 29th. So April 29th from 10 to 12 at 12:14 East Linnor Street, same location as before. Thank you.
Councilmember Fort?
Going to miss you, Robin.
You too.
And congrats to the Canes last night for kicking off a great first game and hopefully they'll do well.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yeah, I just want to say Happy Earth Week, everybody. Also shout out to Will Shoemaker, who gave a fabulous presentation on traffic calming. Actually very much related back to Councilmember Black's question about these new measures we're seeing around the city. He came and gave a presentation to our District D Neighborhood Alliance meeting on Saturday and answered a lot of questions for neighbors. And I thought, you know, presented some pretty robust kind of, I guess, defense of some of the new measures that are in place in terms of we need to, you know, get used to them, we need to experience them and make sure that, you know, they are working. And I think the Transportation Department is very much watching for that user experience. So again, shout out to them for that. I did also want to mention, I don't know if I can make a motion right now, I'm going to ask Michelle for signs. When people bring in signs, I feel like the route, having to have the rounded edges can be a little bit tough if you brought in a sign with a regular piece of paper. And I think it is part of our code that that's not allowed.
It's not. And so after, I guess it's been about a month ago when there were some concerns about the sign sizes and edges and all of that. There was somebody new on staff that was working the front door that was a little confused.
Okay.
So, no.
People can have regular papers for signs now?
Yes.
Thank you, good to go.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. I just wanted to congratulate Oak City Cares on their fourth birthday bash last week. That was, they have done such amazing work there. And the video, if you want to cry, go watch that video. The woman Ethel, who was helped by them, she lived in the woods in a tent and now she is housed. And her story and just is amazing. And so, yeah, it was very emotional, but just great to see the work that's being done. I wanted to mention that there's an Earth Day celebration at 5:00 PM at Flowers Field. And that's Friday. And also to add to what Councilor Fort said, go Canes. That was a great start of the playoffs and hope we see more of that. And yeah, so awesome. Okay, next we are on to appointments.
Good afternoon, I did want to mention, backtracking a bit, I forgot to mention earlier that we did not receive any voicemail public comments. And therefore there's none, there are none attached to the agenda. Okay, BPAC Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, we have one regular vacancy. Shakima McLean received one vote, Natalia Lucky Anova received one vote, and James Rottenberry received six. So Mr. Rottenberry would be appointed taking care of that vacancy. Next is Board of Adjustment, one alternate vacancy for the city appointee. Jeff Bandini received four votes. Councilmember Melton nominated Ryan Torrey. Councilmember Jones nominated Terrence Ruth, so all three of those names will be carried over on the next ballot. Environmental Advisory Board, one regular vacancy. Councilmember Harrison nominated Denzel Burnside, so that will be carried over to the next agenda. Hispanic and Immigrant Affairs Board, one regular vacancy professional category. Councilmember Jones nominated Katie Crisp and Councilmember Patton nominated Elvis Tanyi.
Yeah, so we did a little, there was a little bit of a swapero because there's also an alternate vacancy. So if we could have on the next ballot Elvis Tanyi in the regular vacancy and then have Katie and Carol Bruno on the ballot for the alternate vacancy.
Okay, so these both fit the professional categories?
They do, yes.
I'll read those out real quick just for everybody's knowledge. So Hispanic and Immigrant Affairs Board, one regular vacancy professional category. Councilmembers Patton and Jones nominated Elvis Tanyi. And then for Hispanic and Hispanic and Immigrant Affairs Board, alternate vacancy professional category. Councilmember Jones nominated Katie Crisp and Councilmember Patton nominated Carol Bruno. Historic Cemeteries Advisory Board, one regular vacancy. Connie Crumpler received eight votes. Her application was emailed to you guys yesterday. So she will be appointed and that's taken care of. Raleigh Convention and Performing Arts Center Authority, three regular vacancies. A lot going on here, bear with me. Pete Byers received four votes, Jasmine Kilpatrick, three, Sharat Nagaraj, four, Gurav Patel, six, and Amanda Wise, four. So Gurav Patel, since he received six, would be appointed. So those remaining two vacancies will appear in the next ballot with the remaining four names for consideration. Raleigh Historic Development Commission, one regular vacancy. Councilmembers Patton, Jones, and Melton, all nominated David Sirkstner, so that will appear in the next ballot. Raleigh Transit Authority, one alternate vacancy. Martha Brock received four, Lee Chun Young received three, so that will be carried over. Stormwater Management and Advisory Commission, one regular vacancy. Per your request at the last meeting, did reach out to Mr. Senior for recommendations, he could not think of anything as of yet. However, Councilmember Jones nominated Josh Dalton. His information is on Granicus and will be attached to the next agenda. He does have stormwater experience, so you guys can review that. Nominations, Board of Adjustment, one alternate vacancy county appointee. Just the reminder, normal reminder to provide suggestions to the county, that person does need to reside within the ETJ and not in city limits. Arts Commission, one regular vacancy. The term of Judy Payne is expiring and she does not wish to be considered for reappointment. So that vacancy will be coming back on the next ballot. Civil Service Commission, the term of Honorable Representative Cynthia J. Ball is expiring and she is eligible for reappointment. She's another example of a form that was, an application that was submitted to you guys yesterday. I will note at this time that typically, you know, we are able to get all the forms on the agenda, but since it's kind of a new process for members and everybody involved, I think we'll start seeing that smoothing out a bit. But, so she is seeking reappointment.
I have spoken with her, she would like to be reappointed and I would like to make a motion to approve that. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone in opposition? Okay, thank you.
Hispanic and Immigrant Affairs Board, three regular vacancies, professional member category. I'll just take these separately, it might be easiest. We have three, the terms of three members are expiring and they would all like to be considered for reappointment. I'm sorry, his coder, Zarur, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing his name correctly. His application is attached. And then Ms. Robertson was another example of somebody that was emailed to you separately. I do not have a form for Rasha Mohammed, but you can see all their attendance information. So first we'll start with coder Zarur.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, that appears unanimous.
Next, Ann Robertson desires reappointment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Did you want to make the motion?
Yeah, this is my board, so I did a lot of research, but it's fine.
You go, you make the motion.
So moved.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Melton, all in favor? Aye. Okay.
And next we have Rasha Mohammed.
Chair hasn't been able to reach Rasha, can we roll this over to the next ballot?
Sure, she'll appear on the next ballot for that remaining vacancy. Honestly, I can't remember how many total we have, but it might be joined with another one. Yeah, just her name. And next we have Human Relations Commission, one regular vacancy. The term of Richard Everett is expiring and he would not like to be considered, therefore there's one vacancy there. Parks, Recreation, and Greenway Advisory Board, one regular vacancy. Term of Gregory Etheridge is expiring. I did hear from him this morning that he would like to be considered for reappointment. However, I don't have an application at this time. We're working through some technical difficulties with him submitting one, so he can be rolled over, it's your prerogative.
Yeah, let's, can we roll that onto ballot?
And then finally, we have Raleigh Historic Development Commission, four regular vacancies. Kind of separated this out into two groups here. The first, the terms of Katie Payne, Curtis Casevang, and Jonathan Anderson are all expiring and they're eligible, would like to be considered. All of the applications are attached with these.
Councilmember Fort?
Human Relations Commission, they have alternates, don't they? Since Richard Everett does not want to be reappointed.
Hold on, let me go back. I need to open up the roster. So yeah, I might have missed that, let me see, let me open up the roster here and see who would be eligible to be elevated.
Christina Espña, maybe?
It's not opening.
They both were appointed at the same time, so we normally do it by alphabetical order.
I cannot pull this up for some reason, so if somebody could.
Christina Espña?
Is she the, she's an alternate?
Yes.
So if the council desires consistent with past practice, we elevate the longest-serving alternate member, which in this case you said it might be even, so Christina Espña if you would like, which would create a vacancy for an alternate member.
I move for the elevation.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
Yeah, sorry about that, I must have missed that. So back to RHDC, those three members, they're expiring, they're eligible and would like to be considered. Applications are in the agenda.
Their attendance isn't listed, do we know what it was?
Must have missed that as well. Can probably. I, actually I do not have their attendance back from staff. So I can check that and I can put it on the next agenda under nominations again if you guys would like.
We have the chair here, is there a way that he could speak to that?
Perfect. Thank you.
Gaston Williams, 2617 London Drive, also Chair of the RHDC. The three candidates who are asked to be reappointed have all had very good attendance. And in occasions where they've had conflicts, they've let us know. So they've been responsive to the process.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would love to move to reappoint the three, Katie Payne, Curtis Casevang, and Jonathan Anderson to Raleigh Historic Development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
We're going to miss you, Gaston.
Yeah, and that was the last part was the term of Gaston Williams is expiring. However, he is not eligible due to length of service, so that'll be a vacancy coming back.
Thank you for your service, Gaston.
Thank you.
We'll have a slate with explanations for your consideration going forward shortly. We just need to get this temporary appointment for someone who had to move. And that was David Sirkstner. If you have a chance to elevate his process, he only has less than 60 days on a term, so it'd be nice to get him in our, you know, onboard and helping us.
Is that the one that three of us nominated today? I'm ready to find a move for approval to finish that 60-day term if that's fine with everybody else.
Say that again?
There was an opening resignation, not with these three. And three of us nominated someone that Gaston recommended to finish the 60-day term. And since it's only 60 days, I'm fine to go ahead and make the, I would, I'll make the motion to just go ahead and make the appointment so that we don't have to roll it another two weeks.
Okay, and that was seconded by Councilmember Jones, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous.
Thank you very, very, very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
All right, could we go back to the Raleigh Convention Performing Arts Center? Did not hear the.
Yes. For those three regular vacancies, Pete Byers received four, Jasmine Kilpatrick, three, Sharat Nagaraj, four, Gurav Patel, six, and Amanda Wise, four. So Gurav Patel would be appointed today. And then the remaining two vacancies would appear on the next ballot with the remaining four names that did not receive enough votes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have the report and recommendation of the city attorney.
No report today, mayor, thank you.
Nothing at your last meeting, wow.
I had a lot, I had a lot going on at the work session, so I think I covered it all then.
So that was good enough, okay. And report and recommendation of the clerk?
Several sets of minutes for consideration of approval.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
When you, when you speak, Mary, can you speak in the, move to approve, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous, thank you. Okay, next we have closed session, have a motion here. Motion is in order to enter closed session pursuant to GS 1433181183 to consult with the city attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. the City Attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to consider and give instructions regarding the handling or settlement of potential claim in the following matter, NC DOT versus City of Raleigh.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right. Okay? We have just returned from closed session where the council provided direction of staff on the items listed in the closed session motion. The meeting is now adjourned.